One nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, October 13, 2014. Our most sincere apologies for starting so late. We had a lot of business in executive, and we apologize for keeping everyone waiting. I'd like to invite any public participation in the beginning of the meeting. We offer this as a courtesy to those of you who can't stay through the meeting to make your comments on items on the agenda. So if you would like to do so, please come up now. All right.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Harrington.
My name is Chet Harrington. I'm a resident of, have a taxpayer of Radnor for 45 years. I live at 757 Newtown Road, Villanova, Pennsylvania. And at some particular point in time, I would like to make some comments at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Hill, and also the garden coordinator for the Skunk Hollow Community Garden. If you saw today's paper, this is not a surprise, but the community garden is just finishing up its third year of operation. And to give us a little bit of a challenge, and thanks to Mary Coe, who brought it to my attention, we entered the Pennsylvania Horticultural Garden and Greening Contest this year. This was quite a stretch for us because it meant the garden had to look perfect the end of June, which the gardeners did. The judges came. We didn't wine them and dine them, but they had coffee, and somebody brought bread, and somebody brought mint water, and they judged the garden, and then they went away. And that was the end of June, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited some more. And last Tuesday, we received this certificate from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Recognizing Skunk Hollow Community Garden, and the citation is just great, "For motivating people to improve the quality of life and to create a sense of community through horticulture in the category of vegetable gardening." We were one of 350 entries in this particular category. There were three blue ribbon winners, and I just wanted to share it with you and to thank you for allowing us to use the space. We're looking forward now to year four. Thank you.
Congratulations. It's really, it's really a great, great honor. And I hope that when you receive, when you get word of when the presentation during the flower show will be, you'll share it so that Radnor residents can go cheer you on for this great honor.
Eugene Hough, 115 Cumberland Place. If there's an opportunity, I'd like to share a few concerns with the commissioners.
Okay.
My name's Jim Corrodi. I live on Windsor Avenue in Radnor. I have some comments on the trailways proposal when the appropriate time is here.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment now?
Madam President, if I may briefly. Was in receipt of a, on October 3rd, received a letter from Shanette Claire, and is with their pleasure again to donate in the amount of $20,000 to Radnor Township, $2,000 to support the K-9 unit, and $18,000 to support the tree maintenance and planting throughout the township.
Well, that's fantastic news. Thank you, and thank you to Shanette Claire, who has been a very consistent supporter of our tree program and now our K-9 unit. So thank you for sharing that news, and if Shanette Claire is listening, thank you to you, too. All right, seeing no further comment for now, I'd like to move on. I'd like to announce that we had an executive session immediately preceding this public meeting, and at that meeting, we discussed issues of personnel, litigation, and real estate, and all commissioners were present except for Commissioner Nagel. He took a flight and landed at about 6:00, so he'll be joining us shortly.
And Commissioner Fisher?
And Commissioner Fisher, excuse me, was absent. Next, we have a very positive and exciting item on our agenda, and I'm going to invite Superintendent Calarulo to start the process of swearing in our new police officer, Brian S. Bell.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to the approval of the Board of Commissioners at a previous meeting, we are getting ready to add a much-needed officer to our ranks. That officer's name is Brian Bell. He's 24-years-old. He's a graduate not only from Newtown High School, but he graduated with honors from Cabrini College and a bachelor's degree in criminology. He attended the Delaware County Police Academy in 2012, and prior to coming to Radnor, he was a part-time police officer with the Parkside Borough Police Department. He went through a rigorous hiring process, which includes a background, a physical, and lie detector, and an interview, and he is definitely one of our top finishers on this list. At this time, with your permission, I would ask the audience to please rise for the presentation of colors and the introduction of Your Honor, Ann Osborne, who will do the swearing-in. And Brian is joined here with his parents, his father Donald, his mother Sharon, his sister Jennifer, that little guy there is Noah, I believe, you're five-years-old, right? And Brian's grandparents, so I will turn this over to Your Honor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here again. I know I've seen many of you many times, and it's always very, very nice for me to be here. So welcome to all, and especially to our newly designated and soon-to-be newly official police officer, Brian Bell. So Brian, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Brian Bell..."
"I, Brian Bell..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I am a citizen of the United States of America..."
"That I am a citizen of the United States of America..."
"...that I will uphold the Constitution..."
"That I will uphold the Constitution..."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States..."
"...and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania..."
"...that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer..."
"That I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer..."
"...of Radnor Township..."
"Of Radnor Township..."
"...and obey all orders from my superior officers..."
"And obey all orders from my superior officers..."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
Congratulations.
At this time, we're going to ask everyone to please rise for the retiring of the colors, and the Bell family is welcome to my office for some late refreshments. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and congratulations to Officer Bell. We're happy to have you onboard, and thank you, as always, to Judge Osborne for coming out and officiating. We always appreciate it.
I'll move the approval and consent agenda.
Does somebody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This is a time when we approve several items at once that are perfunctory in nature, and they don't really merit a whole lot of discussion or debate, so we approve them all at once. But we always give an opportunity for the commissioners or someone in the public to take anything out if you feel it deserves some discussion, and I'd like to do that at this time. Is there anybody on the board that would like to remove any item? Is there anybody in the public that would like to remove any item? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes by a vote of six to nothing, with Commissioner Fisher not present. Next, we have an announcement of the vacancies on boards and commissions, and I'll do this as quickly as possible. We have several vacancies coming up. Right now, we have two vacancies. One is on the Citizens' Communication Council, and one is on the Zoning Hearing Board, and those are positions that are open right now, so if you're interested in either, please send your resume right in, and we would love to talk to you about filling that position. Now, we have several positions that will be open January 1, when people's terms expire, and those are two positions on the Board of Health, one on the Harb Historical Architectural Review Board, one on Planning Commission, one on the Shade Tree Commission, one on the Design Review Board, one on Parks and Rec Board, one on the Rental Housing Appeal Board, and then finally, one on the Code Appeals Board. So we have a lot of positions to fill. If you're interested, send your resume to our manager, Mr. Zankowski, and we'll bring you in for about a two-minute interview and hopefully get you working. Next, we have an appointment. Would somebody like to move for the appointment of...
Yeah, I'll move that we appoint Joe Vogli or elevate him from alternate to member for the rental housing board.
Is there a second? Any discussion from commissioners or staff? Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes six to nothing. All right, next, we have the introduction of Friends of Ardrossen Park, and I believe I see Lisa in the audience.
Oh, well, I'm not going to put the website up because I don't use PCs. I'm Lisa Goldstein. I live at 670 Mayland Road in Newtown Square, and I am here to introduce to the board a new not-for-profit organization in Radnor called Friends of Ardrossen Park. Friends of Ardrossen Park is a not-for-profit. We have an all-volunteer board made up of very active residents in Radnor who represent a... You're going to do that for me. Thank you. ...who represent a number of organizations who have long been in support of the purchase of the 71 acres of Ardrossen, and our sole purpose is to raise money to donate to you, the commissioners and Radnor Township, because we believe there's a great deal of public support for this purchase of the 71 acres of Ardrossen, and that the public would like to participate. And while we're in support of this legacy, we hope that this private fundraising will help decrease the burden on future generations. And the money is solely meant to go towards the acquisition of the land and the development of the Trails and Park system at what we hope will be Friends of Ardrossen Park. So I'm just going to, if I can do this, friendsofardrossenpark.org. No, it didn't come up. What there? Scroll down. Did not realize that I am so dependent on Macs. Someone is welcome to help me with this.
Click next words in the ring bar.
If I... Ah, because it's not a... Shouldn't it just come up there?
Help is on the way.
Help, thank you.
Registered professional engineers.
Excellent. I should be able to handle a search engine.
Rich did it the last time, so it's my turn.
I spelled it wrong. There you go, there's an I.
Okay, so we have a website. You can donate online, and every homeowner in Radnor should receive a letter later this week. The letter is going in the mail tomorrow. And again, we're all volunteers, so the money raised is going to Radnor, and we do hope that all of you and all of you will join us in this effort. And in one second, we'll have a website, right? I've been on it all day. Any questions?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for organizing and doing this. This is a great effort to do a little private fundraising for this. I know there are many, many residents who feel strongly about this and who would like to participate, and I hope that when you get your mailer in the mail this week, that you take out your checkbook and be a part of this legacy for the many, many generations to come.
Yes.
And thank you for spearheading this effort.
You are welcome. And I just want to give credit. Our board members serve on many other boards in the community, including the Chester Valley Sportsman's Association, the Darby Creek Valley Association, the Friends of Radnor Trails, the Radnor Athletic Association, Radnor Birdtown, and the Radnor Conservancy. So there's really a lot of support for this effort, and we are glad that Radnor is pursuing it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you for not only this, but also for supporting the board's acquisition of the property, because I know you were here many times. But it's especially nice to hear you do this and start right off the bat, not wait for six months until we have our closing for the property. And for those that follow this sort of thing, will you have a 501(c)(3) application to the Internal Revenue Service?
We have applied, we have applied for 501(c)(3) status. It is pending. I have been assured that it should be no problem because it is very clear what we are doing, and that all donations will qualify as tax-deductible contributions retroactively. So you can donate now, and it will be tax-deductible when we get our 501(c)(3) status.
That's good to know, because you're reducing the cost of government, and those words are written right into the Internal Revenue Code that makes organizations eligible for tax-exempt status. And the way you're reducing the cost of government is you're taking the burden off of the taxpayers of making improvements to Ardrossen Park, and a public-private partnership will take, in fact, take that burden off of us, at least in part. And for that, I personally am grateful for what you're doing.
Thank you. It is our pleasure. This is a wonderful thing for our community.
Can you raise $11.6 million?
Well, that would depend on all of you.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming out tonight and for this effort.
Thank you. I'll leave this to someone else.
All right, next, we have a presentation of our Greenways and Open Space Network Plan, and I see Peter Simone in the audience. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm going to be very brief, because I know you've seen this presentation at least a few times before. What I just handed out to you is a copy of the executive summary, which was part of our charge. It summarizes the more lengthy document, and we think it's a good informational tool for the township, and also will be a valuable fundraising tool as you go to various funding agencies to design, do final design, and build this trail system over the next 15-plus years. You know, we worked with a really very involved committee through this whole process. Their names are listed on the board. Several of them are with us tonight, and as consultants to the township, we'd really like to thank them. They were really instrumental in putting this plan together. You know, we've been through a rigorous schedule of public meetings, committee meetings, focus groups. This is our third time before this Board of Commissioners, so this has gotten a lot of public vetting and public input, and I should say, input that's been very, very helpful. You know that Radnor sits strategically in a very good position in terms of the regional trail system called the Circuit, which is a priority of the William Penn Foundation and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, so that as you complete this trail system, it will connect to the region, not only within the township. The proposed trail system is being proposed. We have 28 miles of proposed trails that would add to your eight miles of existing trails in the township. We've suggested the Priority Trail System. We've provided for you a cost estimate for the overall system, which is about $9.5 million. And again, this would be developed over a period of, we estimate, 15 to 20 years, so it's not going to happen overnight. It's a generational project. The first priority, the Wayne to Radnor Trail, when we presented to the Township Health Board, coincidentally, and without our knowledge, was a recommendation of the Health Board to make the pedestrian connections from Wayne to the Radnor Trail a high priority. And I think you may have seen a recommendation from them recently to do that. So that was a happy coincidence that our work coincided with the work of your Health Board for all the reasons you know. This priority system is a list. It's a working list. You don't have to go in this order. It will depend on the amount of funding you're able to attract from outside sources, and the master plan lists many sources, and even as we come out of the recession, Pennsylvania is a very, very good environment for getting funding for trails. So again, we think this is very doable over the long term. We made a number of revisions based upon suggestions from the public, from citizens, groups, from this Board of Commissioners. These are just listed here. We've had a few minor comments from DCNR, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, who has approved this plan, so those are all ready to go for final printing. We haven't printed yet, in case you have any suggested revision this evening, so we can incorporate those into the final plan. The plan can be adopted by you, approved, accepted, I mean, whatever the pleasure of the board is. It's a planning tool. As you know, it does not commit you to do anything that's in here legislatively, but it's a blueprint for moving forward. And also, as you know, as you decide to fund and design and build sections of the trail, they have to pass the safety standards of primarily PennDOT. We're on a lot of PennDOT roads or crossing PennDOT roads, so safety is a primary concern. Our final meeting with the committee a few weeks ago, they came up with several recommendations, which I just want to go over with you this evening. One was to maintain this committee as a working committee so they can continue to serve as advocates for this project over the long term. Because it's a very specific set of recommendations, and again, we've gotten great feedback from the community. It's one of those projects that it seems like just about everybody can agree upon, which is a rarity in any municipality. So they can be advocates, and they can also be subtle lookouts for funding that comes up, and I listed some of the agencies. So they're interested in doing that, if the board is pleased to do that. That's one suggestion. Another suggestion is to submit an application this April to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for engineering and construction funding. Perhaps it's the number-one priority, the connection from Wayne to the Radnor Trail. It's a relatively small project, and it may be a good one to start with. And also, even if you have other priorities for DCNR, that Trails is a separate fund from Parks and some of their other projects, so even if you had another project that you wanted to submit on, it may be a good idea to submit a trail project, just because it gets you in line even for next year. But it's a small project, and my guess is you'd have a decent, very good shot of being funded. The third thing, and these are in no order here, we made a recommendation that's in the appendix of the report, to revise your open-space acquisition ordinance. We thought we made some suggestions to improve it. As you know, open-space acquisition, as you move forward, is just going to get more difficult than less difficult. So we made some suggestions that we thought protected you in a number of ways. Our committee asked you to consider that as you move forward, and again, we're not asking for you to approve these tonight, but these are just some priority suggestions. Another one is to adopt an official map, a township official map, and then if you decide to do that, to add the trail plan to the official map. And what that does, we think, and we've done it in other communities, is when you go to DCNR or PennDOT or the Commonwealth Finance Agency or the Department of Community and Economic Development, it shows that the township has made a very strong commitment to this trail system because it's on your official map. As you know, the official map doesn't commit you to any action, but it might give you a little more leverage when properties come up for land development or other things come up. So it's a good planning tool that we think shows a commitment of a municipality. And the last thing, which was really a recommendation of this board, is to fill in missing gaps in the township sidewalk system as you develop this trail system concurrently, because as you look at each section of trail that's in the report, it's going to be relatively easy at that point to look at the sidewalk system in that particular neighborhood, and to marry those two things together can work very well from a funding standpoint, and it's important. We didn't specifically look at sidewalks, and I'm sure there are a couple places in the township you'll never want sidewalks, but I think they're going to be the exceptions. So as you develop this trail system, to fill in those sidewalk gaps would be certainly advisable. So with that, I'll close. Just want to reiterate, it's been a pleasure working with the township and with this committee, and would be happy to try to answer any questions or address any comments you might have.
Well, I just want to, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, fantastic job, really. I could not be more thrilled with the product that came out of this process and the work that this committee did, and it is so exciting. So I am jumping out of my seat, ready to approve and accept, and I love the idea of continuing on with having that committee keep it on the top of our heads, because in government, many things can kind of, you know, get, fall to the wayside when you don't really want them to. So I would love to suggest that we put on a future agenda. It's not on tonight's agenda, but that we prepare a resolution continuing on the duties of this committee so that we can continue to push on to make these plans, these trails, become a reality. Now that they're in paper, we want to make them a reality. So I will ask my colleagues and pursue putting that on maybe our next agenda or the agenda after that, that we will have that committee continue. As far as officially approving or accepting, is that, can we do that without it on the agenda?
And you can make a motion to approve it.
We need, I mean, I think that's, there's no urgency in this. Let's see the document. That's my request would be, we see the document and approve it then.
So we'll put it on a future agenda?
Put it on the next one, yeah.
We'll have some time to digest the whole thing as a finished product?
Yes.
And then take a vote on it?
And I have one technical question for you. You said that it's not too late, perhaps, but I had inquired about that small link between Morris and Friends of the Trail Park. So was that examined? It's not on what I have now? Is it too late to get it on?
It's probably too small to see it at that scale, but that is on, it's included, and it's on the, in the cost estimate, so that, your suggestions, Commissioner, have been included.
Very good, thank you.
Peter, I just want to confirm that you're knowledgeable of the group working at Iton Valley Park that is working with people in Haverford for a connector between Darby Road and Bryn Mawr Avenue along the Blue River.
Is this the work, is this the group working with Mr. Fisher on that project, or is this a different group?
No, it's a separate project.
I believe we've included that.
I mentioned it to you before, and it looks like it is.
I believe it's included in the plan, yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any other commissioner comment? Is there anybody from the public who would like to make a statement?
As I said before, I'm Jim Corrodi. I live on Windsor Avenue. I'm Jim Corrodi. I live on Windsor Avenue. My wife and a group of her friends walk the trail three times a week, proceeding from their various residences, and from Windsor Avenue, it would overlap part of what is called the Wayne to Trail Access, the first priority that was on the board there tonight. What concerns me is the access going down Lenore and across Conestoga Road with a proposed new pedestrian crosswalk in the middle of Conestoga.
Excuse me, that was eliminated, though. Correct, Peter? Yeah, so that's eliminated, and it's not shown on this plan, eliminated probably for the concerns that you have.
The route down Lenore, the crossing to Conestoga?
Yeah. Well, that's my concern, the crossing of Conestoga at Lenore with a new pedestrian crosswalk. That's still there?
Yes, sir.
My experience is that drivers in Pennsylvania don't stop for pedestrians and crosswalks. Unfortunately, the Pennsylvania law is not the same as the New Jersey law. I have a meat chair in front of me. I'll leave it with you. Maybe you're already familiar with the difference. Pennsylvania says that a vehicle must yield to a pedestrian in a crosswalk, not stop, yield. That seems to have been interpreted that if they don't run them over, you can't say they didn't yield. I know that sounds cynical. I know that sounds cynical, but I'm sure you have too, witnessed people afraid to go into a crosswalk because of the traffic that's going across. Understand this crosswalk would have lights and be a fancy one like the one on North Wayne Avenue. Well, on North Wayne Avenue, traffic's going slow. I mean, that's a totally different situation as far as I'm concerned. You have lights close by, you have parking going in and out on the street there where people don't race down North Wayne Avenue between Lancaster and West because you can't. But they do race down Conestoga. And they're not expecting to have to stop in the middle of what appears to be nothing to stop for. And I think that's a very dangerous situation that we're creating if we try to put a pedestrian crosswalk in there in the hopes that the cars are going to stop when people step out into that. I'd like to just read you, the state legislature in its infinite wisdom, when they passed 3542A that says that vehicles shall yield, they then added B, "No pedestrian shall suddenly leave a curb or other place of safety and walk or run into the path of a vehicle." So they really weren't all that concerned about pedestrian safety as they were in New Jersey, which says, "Stop and stay stopped." And that was just passed, that just went into effect. I didn't realize how recent it was. April of 2010 is when New Jersey apparently made that change. I wish the Pennsylvania legislation would make the change and I'm sure it will take many years to educate drivers even when they do make the change. But that's my major concern. And I think there is an alternative. I think you could cross where there is a traffic light at West Wayne Avenue. You could go down, what is it, Bloomingdale, one more block to West Wayne Avenue and cross with a traffic, cross Conestoga with a traffic light. Continue on West Wayne Avenue till you get to the Friends of Radnor Park and cross there where there's much less traffic than there is going down Conestoga and much less likely to be a safety hazard. So that's my primary concern. I wanted to just add a secondary comment, incidentally. Are you interested in these statutes? That's from the internet, I assume it's accurate. You can certainly check it. My other comment was just that I realize sidewalks was not a primary focus of this group, but I really would like to see the sidewalks in the township be a primary focus of a group and maybe in a future iteration of this committee or an issue of this committee. Maybe that could become an objective in and of itself. I think we would benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment about this plan, proposed plan?
Well, before we leave the subject of that crosswalk, I'd like to know what the impetus is for wanting to put a crosswalk at Lenore Avenue across Conestoga Road. If you look at a map, center of Wayne to the Radnor Trail, the more logical place would be to just take a direct line down, as Jim Karodi says, West Wayne Avenue to the traffic signal at Conestoga. And from there, it's just a quick jump to the trail opening, trail access.
So Peter, do you want to address that? Because I know that was given a tremendous amount of thought.
Sure. The reason that was done, Commissioner, was that when you cross at Lenore Avenue, then the trail continues into the Wayne Preserve as an off-road trail connection and then goes to the Radnor Trail. If we continued to bring pedestrians down South Wayne, it's very narrow.
West Wayne.
West Wayne, thank you. Very narrow, it's very, there's no room to do anything there, you go under that bridge. So the reason to cross at Lenore was so we could get into the Preserve quickly and easily and we get people off-road. As I mentioned earlier, if that crossing goes forward, it has to be approved by PennDOT. And we've met with PennDOT. I believe we talked about that specific crossing.
That's just pushing the problem aside. What is so important about having access through the Wayne Preserve?
Because what we tried to do, Commissioner, is find the best, most direct, and safest route from Wayne to the Radnor Trail. And based upon looking at, we think, all the alternatives, that's what we've suggested. Now, again, when you get to the point of engineering and designing this, those working assumptions of ours, which are based on a lot of experience, would have to be confirmed.
And you say that the West Wayne access loses out to the Lenore Avenue access because of lack of sidewalks or lack of safe?
When, and I may have speaking with the wrong road names, but we come down South Wayne.
West Wayne.
Is it West Wayne? And then we make a right on Conestoga for the short distance. This is just for pedestrians now. Cyclists would be directed to continue the way they do now. So pedestrians make a right to where Lenore is, and then at Lenore, we're suggesting the crossing there for pedestrians. Because we think that's safer than sending pedestrians down West Wayne because there's no room to build anything there.
And also, there is already pedestrian access on West Wayne, meaning it's the left side. So if someone wanted to walk down West Wayne and take the route that you identified, they would be able to take that route.
Well, that contradicts just what he just said.
I don't think so. I think that's augmenting it. And part of the augmentation was to get direct access to the West Wayne Preserve. As opposed to if a pedestrian wanted to get to the West Wayne Preserve, they would have to walk all the way up using the route that you identified as preferential. They'd have to walk all the way up, cross over, and then cross through the park to get to the, cross through Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. So it's not a huge burden, but I mean, I was part of this for the neighbors on Lenore were very concerned about this. So the feedback that I got was that they wanted to have access to the Preserve from the Wayne side without having to go around the back of it.
Aren't you also opening it up to that neighborhood rather than forcing them? I mean, the idea of this whole plan is to increase the availability of access to trails to everybody.
And I think if you're, if one is concerned about, I know that not everyone will accept this, but if one is concerned about speeds on roads, in my opinion, putting something across the road like the kind of crosswalk that was discussed during the development of this, in my opinion, that makes that stretch of road safer, not less safe. You can't stop somebody who's going to run out in traffic, but in my opinion, that's going to make, it may be marginally more safe, but it's going to make it safer.
What I'm hearing is that somehow West Wayne Avenue is not safe to get from Conestoga to the trail. And secondly, that the people on Lenore Avenue in that neighborhood need to get to the Wayne Preserve. Well, let's, I'd like to see proof of that first contention. I don't know that I agree with it. And secondly, as to the second contention, the people on Lenore Avenue could walk on Conestoga in the direction of South Devon Avenue where there is an intersection, although it's not a controlled intersection, there's just one stop sign. And there's no crosswalk at this point, but maybe we ought to think about putting a crosswalk there.
Yeah, so in my opinion, that makes great sense. And it would be counterproductive to try to take the mid-block crosswalk out. If one of the concerns that I certainly share, and I was supportive of this when, you know, I only involve myself in a very small part, but this was the part I involved myself in, that one of the concerns was that stretch of, south of Conestoga Road has high speeds. The way to reduce the high speeds is to have a crosswalk at South Devon, a crosswalk in the middle.
I think that is on the list of ways to slow traffic down, that's probably the worst thing we could do.
But Jim, you just spent $150,000 to do it on North Wayne Avenue.
Let me just intervene here. This conversation, what we're getting from our consultant is a recommendation and a recommended plan that's coming from our consultant and our committee. We are not obliged to follow every aspect of it. When and if this particular project starts, we get the funding and it comes to fruition, we will have it more engineered in more detail. We will have PennDOT's input and we will have this type of detailed discussion about where this crosswalk will go and where it is most appropriate. We have our recommendation from our committee and from our consultant. We have input from the neighbors already, and I'm sure when this comes to fruition, we'll get more input. Tonight, we don't need to decide that. Okay? We have some more public comment. Hi Claudia.
Hi. Claudia McBride, I'm a resident of Radnor Township, 318 Shamnee or Shimonie Road. I'm also the executive director of Mainline School Night. And I just wanted to say for the record and for consideration with regard to this plan, that the students at Mainline School Night, as well as the people who enjoy Harford Park and the dog park therein, sorely miss what we all thought was a right-of-way trail connecting the R5 or Radnor Station to Harford Park. So I've been, I'm sorry, I came kind of late to the discussion, but I did see recently that there is a proposed trail, I believe it's in the 2B category, so it's not priority, but probably secondary, for a trail to go from the Radnor Station to Harford Park. I think connecting a 31-acre public park to a train station makes enormous sense, and I hope that we can move that trail up on the list of priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Cheryl?
I just wanted to tell John that the, all through this whole process.
Mike, you got to put your mouth on.
Through the whole process, we have been in touch with the folks from Haverford Township. And they have been aware of this and we've sent them our materials also. So they're looking to connect with us as much as we are with them, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a whole thing. Thanks.
So anybody else who'd like to comment about the proposed plan? Okay, so we will have this for approval on a very, an upcoming agenda, probably the next one, along with some language about continuing on with the work of this committee. And thank you very much.
All right, tonight, we're looking to approve a mural at the Wayne Senior Center. I'll make the motion. If there's a second, we can then have a discussion about it. I so moved that we approved the mural.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I see some representatives from the Wayne Senior Center, I did. Okay, come on up. And perhaps you can tell us a little bit about, give us a little background and tell us a little bit about what is being proposed.
I want, I'm Susan Shapiro and I'm the executive director at the Wayne Senior Center. And George Rothicker brought me this wonderful idea that I'm going to let him tell you about because he can do a much better job than me. Here he is.
Thank you, Susan. I'm George Rothicker. I live at 216 Radnor Chester Road. I have been in Radnor for 30 years. I am an artist and I'm also an advertising marketing person. I am a consultant for the Delaware County Tourist Bureau. And we're working on a project to make the county one as far as the way people view it. Currently, our, the county is divided, advertised as a Brandywine Country, Brandywine Valley. And we have several different parts of Delaware County, which include Upper Darby, one of the most multicultural communities anywhere. We've got the main line, which doesn't seem to often think of itself as Delaware County. And you've got the riverfront. My idea, as it came up, was to create a form of mural program, which would be historic, cultural, and in some ways beautifying, meaning not art for art's sake, but art for the sake of informing people, as well as putting it in appropriate spots. A mural program that ignores the, where things are just for the sake of art, just for the sake of having a mural, doesn't mean anything. So I brought this to the Tourist Bureau. I did not want to run it. I do not want to run it. I want it to be picked up by many people. Right now, I have Nancy Campbell of the Wayne Art Center. I have the Community Art Center in Wallingford. I have Greg Pritchard, who helps me, who I know often has comments about historic value in this community. And he's been helping me with the history. I want it to be brought through all the communities and tie Delaware County together as a cultural and historic Mecca. We have 87 places on the National Historic Register in Delaware County, and they're all over. They're not just in one spot. And they're not just in Chad's Ford, and they're not just in Wayne. They're all over. My idea was for the first one, an historic mural, but I didn't know where to put it. And I live here and need a poster child. And I was walking through Wayne with my wife from the parking lot and saw the back of the Senior Center. Senior Center is a block building, has nothing on it, in the back facing the parking lot. And so I will put this out here. I thought it might make an interesting wall for a piece of history, but I didn't know what the history would be. So I talked with my good friend Greg, and Greg told me that the train station, actually the train tracks, almost ran right through where the Senior Center is right now before the 1880s. And I thought, wow, that's really cool. Because here we've got a wall and we have something historical. And then Greg comes to me with a picture, which is of the old train station. Well, it didn't have a train in it and it wasn't long enough to show where it was. But with some research, we found out that the, it was a little bit, a little bit east of the existing train station and a little bit east of the Senior Center. But right along that line, there were cornfields on the other side. And in about 1888, the tracks were moved 100 feet north. The second picture I have in here is of it in the 1930s. And the picture shows the spires of the Wayne Presbyterian Church, which if you stand at the rear of the Senior Center, you can look to the right and you can see those spires. And this shows you where the Senior, where the train station was then. And this shows you that there was only one spire back in the 1880s because the other spire of Wayne Presbyterian was not built yet. So with copy, by the way, the top sign that says Wayne was actually blown up from the small sign that was on the shed, this building that was the train station in previous era. So people don't know the history and it's not going to be conventional as far as murals. And I've been, even from the art community, gotten a lot of arguments as far as what murals should be. But this mural faces a parking lot. It's a wall that is empty. It's a wall that the person, the organization seems to support with Ms. Shapiro, that the, and it's one that combines history and art. And by the way, yes, we do have a logo on there for Delaware County. It would be a painted stencil on every mural in Delaware County that would say the same thing. And that's my proposal. Any questions?
So this would be fully funded by the volunteers and by the Delco organization?
Fully funded. The first mural is mostly volunteer work, my work particularly. It's raising money after one is done from other businesses and other community leaders. There's a wall in Marcus Hook that's just wonderful for a shipping mural because it's on the wall of the shipping company that it would be on the wall of a shipping company that was in Marcus Hook at the time. That's an historically appropriate mural. A mural that goes where it shouldn't be is not what we're looking for. This has virtually, at this point, enough funding for materials from the Tourist Bureau. And I'm working free for this job. And I would like to see, I would like to see my personal vision of more art and history being taught through the tours, the places you go, the places you see. you see in Delaware County.
And you and the Tourist Bureau are aware that the future of the building itself is uncertain?
We are aware that the future of the building is uncertain. And Mrs. Shapiro told me that, and I said, well, you know, it's still a poster child.
Right. Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Yes. It's George Rothicker.
Yes.
Thank you for doing this.
Oh.
Doing the plan. But I was, Elaine asked the question I was gonna ask, that the future of the Wayne Senior Center is not all that firm or clear, and it's possible...
Not the center, the building.
Right.
Oh, I don't mean the people.
Right.
That, the structure. It's possible it could be raised.
Oh, I know that. We know that. The issue is, is until you build something, you can't get anything else built. I need a poster child for this. If it moves, I know the Wayne Art Center has a wall that faces the trail. And they could have a beautiful mural on the side of a building that's not particularly attractive, that actually adds interest to the trail. So once you get something, you may lose something, but you have the opportunity to get other places. This is one thing, as far as the fact this will be painted on the wall by people. We'll be doing a video of it to show how it's done. Get interested in the idea of the mural arts in this area. Philadelphia's had it for a long time. I don't plan on anything that's elaborate as the Philadelphia, and it's not appropriate for this area. And what's appropriate for Radnor isn't the same as what might be appropriate for Upper Darby. So we have to decide, and then we're gonna have to have somebody who's going to, including the Tourist Bureau, including the communities, say yea or nay on proposed places and, and the project, as it goes along.
Sure. I wish Greg were still here, because I would like to ask him about his caption.
About the what?
The caption. You see in the lower left, you've got a blow-up of something there superimposed on.
Yes.
And what I'm, I would like to ask him about is the first sentence, or both sentences. "The old train station as it existed in the 1930s." Or the old trains, that should be eighteen, that should be 1850s possibly, not 1930s. The old station, the one...
No, no, the one...
The big, the big structure.
On the left, he had already mentioned, we need an arrow to point to the one on the left. That is the way it appeared. The one that's in the, on the left-hand side is the train station that's up there in the center. That is related to the picture on the left-hand side. And before we had this meeting, Greg said, you ought to have an arrow pointing over to that station. That is a picture, a photograph of the Wayne Train Station in the 30s, as it looked then. And it was just for a locator, so people would know where they were when they were standing.
So he's saying, he's saying that the old station that was built in the 1840s...
Right.
...remained until the 1930s?
The building remained. And, and the way you can tell is by the cars. You can't see them from here. But on the left-hand side, you'll see a lot of cars, which are from the 19, early 1930s.
Okay. That clears up that sentence. The next sentence says, "The current station is to the right and toward the camera." Can you help us what he's saying there?
The current station is located to the left of where you are standing, and directly across the station road. So if you're looking at the mural, and you would look through the mural, or to the left or right, you'll see the existing train station.
Yes.
Now, this, again, this is a prototype, and your questions on copy of how we're going to express this are still up for, we haven't finalized any of that. So it may not be as clear. We may find a clearer way of saying it. But the, what is interesting about this mural is you can stand there, and you can look across at the spires of the Wayne Presbyterian Church from, from the back of the parking lot, and be in this scene, and position it. And the spire that's on the Wayne Presbyterian Church back in the 1880s, when it was alone, and it was the only spire there, can be shown and gives you a position. Because otherwise, you wouldn't know, the, the mural would have no real reason for being on the, on the Senior Center.
All right, that, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, did we have any other comments or questions? Did we have a motion?
Yes, we had a motion.
A motion and a second?
John seconded.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this? You did second it?
Don.
Don seconded, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, come on.
Sure.
My name is Lois Brooks, and I live at 135 Walnut Avenue. You prefaced all of this, or somebody did, by talking about the divisions within Delaware County.
Yes.
I do not see, it has something to do with whether this was a good mural or not, or appropriate for Wayne. I don't see how this mural will do anything to divide, to in fact lessen those divisions. And I think it's wrong to start with that philosophical program, because it's irrelevant to the choice of this particular mural. People in Radnor, I've lived here for 40 years, and people, and many people in Radnor Township never go south of Route 3. And they never go east to Upper Darby. And this mural will not entice them to do that, or to have any simp, I'm sorry to say this, but to have much sense of identification with the people in Marcus Hook. And I say this as someone who, from Radnor, who does go to Marcus Hook.
Well, what, as a county, former county commissioner, what he's doing is, if you had a series, and he's all throughout the county with the same symbol, and you, it sort of, it brings, if you could see one of these in Upper Darby, one in Radnor, one in Havre, one in Marple, one in Marcus Hook, even...
So it's the symbol that in effect is gonna unify.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Can I also say one thing?
Yes.
The reason why the Philadelphia murals are so effective is that they have faces of people. And I'm sure this is what the artists, my background is in art. I'm sure this is what, what the artists who have questioned this have in fact said. And I would suggest that if you want to make it more appealing, that you have, you cut the, the front there, and you in fact have a close-up, and you have figures in the picture, because that's what people respond to.
Thank you very much for your input. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comments about this potential mural project? All right, well, it's been...
Well, I had a couple. Can you explain more about the overall vision? How is this tying in? You're talking about a hook. You said you needed, that you needed this as a hook?
No. This is a poster child for a project that will, overall, let's just assume, take the fact that this building is destroyed. Take the fact that you have these murals. Some murals are stay, some aren't. On the Historic Register, you have 89 places in Delaware County. Two of them have been destroyed. They're still on the Historic Register. The fact that you're telling a story of a community, and you're telling it in the communities, maybe the murals are only, the mural is there, maybe a book is done, and they're put together with all of these murals. It would be nice if there were 50 or 60 murals throughout Delaware County. Funding is going to be an issue, but it's gonna be putting artists in the mix to work. It's going to be putting, bringing areas of the community that the same system was, it was a consistent system throughout the county of, it's not an isolated, we're here, you're there. It's, this mural program is all together supposedly. That's my vision of it. Whether it's an "er" or "right," that's my vision.
It's a wonderful vision. It's a wonderful vision.
That's true. Why, why is funding going to be an issue? Obviously, it's not, based on this, it's not an issue for Radnor, right? Where this is going to be no cost of taxpayer.
Well, it's not an issue, because the Tourist Bureau will support it somewhat, but they can't support it a lot. I've given, I've been given figures that in Philadelphia, a mural can be as high as $50,000 to do a mural, because of the, what they have to do to get it done and all that. We're gonna do this for chump change. And it's gonna be provided for materials, for brushes, for paint. And people are volunteering to paint. People want to be a part of this program.
Stay with the mic.
If you could speak into the microphone, so everyone at home can hear you.
Thank you very much. We got it.
Okay.
Well, no, 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 no. Thank you, Commissioner Spangler. I haven't gotten it. So what, I would like to understand, why wouldn't that work for all the other ones? Or what, is there anything, are you, are you going to be asking Radnor to pay for...
No.
...two or three in the future?
No.
What's, what's the overall...
Well, the overall, let's say, once this is, once this is promoted, an example Nancy Campbell said, I would love to have a mural on the back facing the trail. And I said, with the artists there, and I brought up a couple of artists that, I mean, unfortunately, some things are not people, maybe it's flowers, maybe it's something that's done by some of their wonderful crew of artists, that faces the trail, but also might be promoting Chanticleer, not promoting the Wayne Art Center. These are not signs to promote a business, or it's not to, to promote a particular aspect. It's to promote the culture of the community, and to add to the visual look and the artistry, as well as understanding of the history.
And I understand that, and I think that's a worthy goal. I, my concern is, is that, is this a first step that is going to necessitate a further commitment? And is there an approval that we're making by this one mural that will necessarily commit the taxpayers, or even the concept to, for, for subsequent, well, the subsequent boards?
The answer is no. Just keep it short.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So it passes five to...
Yes, you may. And, you know, Commissioner Spangler, if Commissioner Spangler's bored and doesn't want to be here, then you're free to step down. Why don't you step down, Bill?
No, we're not gonna have a debate.
The issue is understanding what this is about. And I, and just telling the person to keep it short, I think is tremendously rude and inappropriate. And, and if this is not a commitment...
Then vote against it. Don't abstain.
If this is not a commitment, I'm abstaining because I don't know enough about this project.
Thank you, Reg. It's been voted upon. It passed five to nothing with one abstention and one absence.
Next, I'd like to move the approval ordinance 2014-13 for adoption, amending Article 8, Personnel Policy, Section 570, Civil Service Provisions of the Administrative Code of Radnor Township.
Second.
Okay, this was introduced at our last meeting. Is there any further comment from any of the commissioners, or comment from staff?
Madam President, I just want to thank the Civil Service Commission for the time they put in to come up with these changes. They do a nice job for the township. Just want to recognize them for that.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comment from staff or commissioners? Any public comment? I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It passes by a vote of five to one, with Commissioner Fisher absent.
Next item is Resolution 2014-94, amending the Township Manager's Employment Contract. And there are just a few amendments to the employment contract. One, changes the salary from a hundred and eighty-two thousand to one hundred and seventy-six thousand, reduction of $6,000. One, the manager shall receive 20 days vacation, and we're changing that to 22 days of vacation. Another one was that the family covenant, the manager's co-pay in 2013 was 11 percent, 24, I'm sorry, it was 10 percent, and then the third, January 13, it went to 11 percent, January, 11 percent in 2014. And 2015, it was scheduled to be 12 percent, and we're increasing that to 13 percent, the contribution. And the last item is that the manager is required to, to live in Radnor Township. But in this contract, we're gonna say that the manager is required to live in Radnor Township, as he currently does, but may reside outside the township if he may so choose, within a 10-mile radius. And that's my motion.
So that, that includes the 10-mile radius on 7D? Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion or questions or comments from commissioners? Any discussion or comments from staff?
Yes, I have a comment. The 10-mile radius, I don't think is particularly necessary. Either the township manager should be required to live within the township, or he's allowed to not. I guess the, the thought behind a 10-mile radius is that it allows him to be close enough that he can respond. I guess that makes sense. But the real value in having the township manager live in the, in the township, as I see it, is to be part of the community, and the tax, and other rules and regulations that he's a part of, that he also live with all of us under those. So I, I think it's important to be within the township, more so than the proximity of, of 10 miles. I, I have full faith that the township manager will be responsive 10 or 11 miles, or 12 miles, or two miles away from the township. But to be part of the tax structure, to be part, to live under the same rules, I think is the most important element.
Any other comments?
Madam President, I am a resident of Radnor Township. Just want to make that clear.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Any public comment? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Are voting on the amendment?
It was. He didn't amend it. He just, he made a motion.
I made a motion including that.
With that language in it. So there was no amendment.
Wait, I thought, don't we have to amend the motion? Because it doesn't include that as it is.
No, the motion, he made the motion including the amendment.
Including the amendment.
So there was no original motion on the floor. His original motion included the new language.
As a matter of procedure, don't we need to approve the amendment, and then...
Well, there was, there was no, as was just stated, there was no original motion. The original motion was...
Don't we need to consider the original motion, then?
We are considering the original motion.
We need to consider the original motion, and then the amendment.
No. The original motion included, made one change to the proposed contract, and that was to add the 10-mile radius for the residency. That's it. That was the original motion, so there was no amendment.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the resolution passes by a vote of six to nothing, with Commissioner Fisher absent. Okay, next, we move on to community development with, development with Commissioner Curley.
I move the approval of Resolution 2014-95. This is regarding the amending Article 8, oh, excuse me, this is the request for inter-municipal liquor transfer from PQ Wayne, Inc.
Second.
Solicitorize, would you mind just detailing the, the aspects of our previous discussion that got incorporated into this agreement?
So the board held a hearing on the application, a proposal. Mr. Goldstein is here, representing the applicant to transfer this liquor license from out of the municipality into Radnor Township. There were several proposed conditions that were discussed. And I got feedback from some of the board members regarding, to some extent, the harshness of some of the restrictions, and just some questions about other restrictions. I spoke to counsel for the applicant, and what you have in front of you now are some of the items that were discussed last month. All of these items have been agreed to by the applicant. And the conditions that are set forth is that alcohol sales will be limited to wine and beer only, no takeout beer sales, no outside amplified music or entertainment, which I understand would be prohibited anyway by the state licensing board. Number four was something that I discussed with counsel, that, I'm sorry. Number four would be compliance with the Liquor Control Board, terms and conditions. Number six was an additional provision that was discussed with counsel, that there'd be written approval by the township prior to any transfer within the township. So if this restaurant doesn't succeed, and there's some other location in the township, that would come back in front of you. And I've been speaking for counsel, but he can tell you whether he's in agreement or not with these, with these conditions. The only things that were removed, that were discussed, there was some discussion about limiting the number of bar seats. Even though they're not intending to have a traditional bar, I think there'll be a coffee bar, or some other type of bar in this restaurant. But there was some discussion about that, and then there were some other conditions that were discussed. So this is ready for the board's approval and/or discussion with counsel for the applicant.
Okay. And do you have anything to add to that?
No, just that I have reviewed the terms of the proposed resolution with my client. They are acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, exactly. What is the type of bar, and bars... Yes, exactly what is the type of bar and bar stools that will be at this facility? John just said it's going to be a coffee bar, there's not going to be any bar there for, for sit-down alcoholic beverage consumption?
The premises is already built. They're not planning any physical changes to the premises. They're just planning to offer...
Is this a commitment, there's no commitment not to change it, so that there is, though, correct? Or is there?
They have no intention to, but there's no prohibition against adding something. However, they would be limited, of course, to wine and beer only. There's still no hard alcohol to be served. So it wouldn't really qualify as a traditional bar. But no, there's no, the place is built, they're not going, they don't, they have no intention to rebuild it. It's basically the same setup that they have with the two other locations in Philadelphia. It's just not their business model to have a bar. But we didn't want to hamstring them further than what they've already agreed to.
Okay, so there's no commitment not, not to establish a bar with a, is what we're saying?
Well, a bar would be just wine and beer. It's not the word bar.
The question was directed to, well, Representative for PQ.
Bar could, could basically be countertop. In other words, if you have a bar where somebody sits to have coffee, or somebody sits to order pastry, is that a bar if they can also order wine and beer?
Yeah, excuse me, I can't hear, because Mr. Spengler's being rude. I also, Bill, I'll remind you that I have been able to get through a bachelor's degree in engineering, passed the bar exam in two states, and have a Juris Doctor and a Master of Law.
Rich, let's try and keep this discussion focused, okay?
So I think I can understand the things. Again, again, you, your client's not going to commit, so there may be a bar there, is what we're saying. John, you had, someone had indicated that the Board of Commissioners can't really stop moving of a...
Correct.
Of a liquor license from outside of the township, inside of the township. Is that correct? And what's that, is that, what's the legal, what's the, give me the background on the legal analysis on that?
You have the experts standing in front of you, but what happens...
He's conflicted to advise me.
Well, he's been pretty honest and straightforward with my dealings with him, so I think he can take whatever he tells you. But the way the transfers work, I guess since '06, the statute changed that governs the transfers, is they have to come for a public hearing, and this board has the right to approve or not approve it, approve it with conditions. But ultimately, it goes back to the licensing, the state licensing agency, and they may have the final say on what conditions get attached.
But the big issue of the legislation was, they were restricted by township. The number you could have was restricted by, like, Radnor Township, and they changed the legislation that they can move anywhere in Delaware County, they no longer restrict it to municipalities.
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
So now we're getting legal advice from Mr. Spengler, real estate agent and usher.
I have a doctorate and a PhD in government.
Okay.
All right, do you have any other comments?
You have a PhD in government?
Mr. Booker, do you have any other comments?
Can you explain something that's a little more cogent?
Sure.
Thank you.
The rule, the rule in '06 changed it where previously licenses were limited within a municipality, within Radnor Township, would have to stay in Radnor Township, and would have to come from nowhere outside Radnor Township. After '06, they made it countywide, with the proviso that moving a license from another township into Radnor Township would require a public hearing and the approval by Radnor Township. Then the license has to stay here for a minimum of five years, and then it can be moved elsewhere in Delaware County, but would require the approval of whatever the receiving municipality would be in that instance.
I guess I just don't understand. So what's, is this, it's just a formality, is what you're saying, the township's approval?
No, it's not.
So if we decided, if we decided not to approve it, then what, what would be the process? The county would then direct it to be moved?
No. A resolution of approval from this township needs to be attached to my liquor board application. If you don't approve my client's application, my client's application before you, then I can't go to the liquor board. That's the purpose of this hearing, is to get the approval of Radnor Township for my client's application.
But you'll admit that the legislation's not very strong, because it has to affect the health, welfare, morals. It's very ambiguous. There's nothing really we can hang our hat on, unless we could prove that it was a nuisance bar, or it's proximity to a church or a school, you know, I mean, it's very...
Sure, there are standards.
It'd be very difficult for us to come up with standards to turn down one of these...
I would argue, especially in this instance, this is probably as innocuous a licensee as you'll ever see.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
I have a question for Commissioner Curley. We had traded some emails earlier about this, and you had some concerns. Are you, is this okay with you now?
Yes, they're all addressed for me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other comment from staff? Any comment from the public? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes by a vote of six to nothing. Commissioner Fisher absent.
Thank you.
Now we have a presentation of the Township Manager recommended 2015 preliminary budget.
Thank you. Between Bill and myself, we'll kind of step through this with you, kind of an overview of where we are, and both of us will be chiming in as we move through this particular process. But I do want to begin by saying that the Board of Commissioners, in the time since I've been here, has really taken the lead in starting to address a number of the issues that have existed here in the township. Unfortunately, I think you've been caught holding the bag, I guess, for a lot of these issues, where they've accumulated for the years, to where now it's time where the township has to step up and actually start paying for these, these items here. So there's some information that we have, and we'll go through here, we'll kind of step through it, and then we'll also be looking for some direction from the board. So with that, Bill, I'll let you begin.
Thank you, sir. So what we'll be stepping through are the major revenue assumptions that went into the numbers that we'll take a look at, the major expense assumptions, the 2015 general fund summary, the capital plan at a summary level, as well as what the forecast looks like with the updated numbers, and then the next steps in the budget process. So we take a look at the revenue assumptions. Where we'd like to start is the real estate millage rate that the township has on the books. For 2014, 13, and 12, it's been the same, 3.7511. So the last time the rate went up was from 11 into 12, and has remained at the same tax rate since then. 2015 on this table is to be determined, as we'll step through some of the variable items, some of the decision points that we have as we go through the process. The other aspect that we like to remind residents about is, with regard to all of the taxes that we pay at the local level, for every dollar that we pay, 12 cents is what is coming to the township. As we've been discussing over the last four years, is the importance and the growth that the business privilege tax and the other Act 511 taxes have had on the township's budget, as these have been the primary sources of revenue that the township has used to be able to maintain the real estate taxes where they are, and at the same time, allocate additional unexpected income towards some of our longer-term liabilities, capital programs, stormwater funding, and those types of things. So one of the major revenue assumptions that we touch on is the business privilege tax. So for now, the assumption is normal growth, which is somewhere in the ballpark of 4%. It's been higher than that in prior years. It's, it's been, it's never been lower than that since the, as we've been coming out of the recession. So we feel that that is conservatively fair, as far as an assumption goes.
And as part of this, when we talk about economic development, and the value of economic development, unless you're a bedroom community, which your reliance is upon real estate taxes, this is the type of balance you want to be able to see, where your business and other fees are actually carrying the majority of the load here, and not dependent upon your real estate taxes. So as part of economic development, you want to continue to see that scale tip in that direction, less reliance upon real estate tax, and to continue your operations based on other sources of revenue for a township.
As we jump into the other major, or the major expense assumptions, all the other revenue assumptions, as they exist in these tables, with regard to real estate tax, let me jump back, actually. So with regard to real estate tax in the other category, real estate taxes, as they're built into the forecast now, are at no change in the millage rate. There are increases in revenue, and that's due to the growing assessed value of the township year over year, which, over the last 12 years, has been about a half a percent per year. So the township's total assessed value continues to grow. The other, the other revenues are those generated by departments, grants, interest, rents, and the like. And those are estimated with just normal growth. The biggest one in there is, deals with the revenue generated at the community development department, dealing with permits. That's a little bit of a, that's as tough to predict as the business taxes, just because it's information, the information, or the, the activity that drives that is outside of anything that we control. It's really dependent upon the act, the business activity in town. So jumping over to the major expense assumptions, with regard to staffing, there is, as of now, the inclusion of the drug task force, which would include four, four additional officers to the department, in solid waste, replacing two full-time positions that have been previously vacated over the last few years, and we can touch on that in a moment. And then all other departments, it's based on today's head counts. With, specific to the solid waste, as the, the program goes, we have seven routes. Each of those routes are manned by three-person crews. So on any of the trash or recycling days, there's 21, 21 personnel needed to deploy. With staffing, the full-time staffing levels, wherever they are now at 18, it's requiring resources to be pulled from park maintenance and highway on a regular basis, which is now starting to impact park maintenance and highway. So it's something that we took a look at during the budget process, and included those two full-time positions. I know at the same time, Public Works is also going to be working on taking a look at other methods of collection, which may help with that situation over the long term. But in order to keep up with the service load that's on the department now, replacing those two positions is included in the budget. Payroll-related expenses, which, as you're aware, the payroll and related expenses are by far the biggest category of expense for the township, being that we're in the business of providing services. So wages are assumed at two and three-quarter percent increase, with the union folks and the agreements that we have in place with them, that, that's mandated by those contracts. For all the non-union personnel, as it's been over the last four years, that it's an increase up to two and three-quarters, and those will be dependent upon performance evaluations at the manager's discretion. Healthcare, we're assuming at this point an increase of eight percent in premiums. We have not received definitive numbers yet from divot, but that's the ballpark that we've been in. A little bit, again, a little bit more on the, I'm hoping a little bit on the high side there, but that's going to be pretty realistic, I think. But again, hopefully not any higher than that. MMO, as we discussed at the, the second meeting in September, the last meeting we had, where we adopted a resolution introducing the initial MMO for next year, the increase is rather minor going into next year, as we don't have the biannual actuarial update. So at this point, the MMO's adjusting based on payroll adjustments only. We'll expect updated actuarial information in the spring, which will help guide what happens to that figure moving forward. OPEB, as we introduced and implemented with the 2014 budget, we're adding, going into year two of the funding ramp-up, which was starting at 200,000 a year, and incrementally adding 200,000 per year for 10 years, and eventually building up to what is, what is actuarially calculated as the annual required funding. And I'll have the graph here momentarily that shows what the long-term plan is for that. And then with regard to two disability retirements, making sure that we are putting in place the funding now to fund those actuarial losses that will incur as a result of those. With regard to the capital plan, funding the capital plan through general fund transfers, this is the first time since the plan was introduced that, that we're in a situation where we have, we should really start talking about that. The plan that we've worked on and implemented is going on to its third year. The first two years, we have been fortunate enough through other revenues and unexpected increases in, or one-time revenues in some of the other areas, where the, the capital plan has been funded through that. So in 2011 and 12, as a result of the excess fund balance policy adopted by the board, we were able to allocate enough to fund the capital plan in those years. And then with the $8 million settlement from last year, we were able to fund this year's capital program. So it, in all likelihood, those types of revenues, or unexpected revenues, will not occur over the long term, so it seems prudent to talk about what the capital plan looks like as it's built into the budget. And then the one change, significant change from last year's plan, as it was discussed, was the inclusion of a little bit more comprehensive park improvement plan. I know that the Parks Board had, had worked on this, had worked on an inventory, where they've gone out and done some preliminary assessments of the various parks. We've taken that information and added numbers to it, and put it into a plan that could be evaluated over the next five and 10 years.
One thing that I know that I've heard some comments over the last year about the township spending a lot more money now than what was spent in the past, I think here it shows from 2000 through 2014, kind of where it is. If you look at the 2014 budgets, approximately what the township was spending in 2006. But through that, the board has actually here recently started to address the long-term issues of OPEB and pension. So there are additional dollars being put towards that. So the idea that we're spending a whole lot more money now isn't accurate. And then too, if you look in the spike of 2014, I believe that's actually the $8 million that was in there. That come through that settlement. So if you really reduce the, that $8 million out of there from a one-time settlement, you see exactly where, you know, we were probably even previous to that time. So I think there's an opportunity here to recognize the board, Carfac, for their hard work and efforts to address a lot of these issues. But also thought too, is interesting is, through this period of time, you can see where the, our general obligation bonds and the borrowing that has taken place, which, over a period of time, you look at a window of, Bill, I'll ask you, between 2004, 2009, I believe the township borrowed approximately $30 million for that. And not sure what the plan was of how to actually repay that back. So it's just, that's one of the items that, again, this board has been working through and addressing a lot of these issues. With the refunding that you did last year, the elimination of the swap option, too, again, has all made a difference, that the hard-working efforts of the board is paying a dividend for us.
Yeah, and just to add...
Bill, I'm sorry. Is that all right? Question? The, the blue line in this, that's a sum of the, the general fund, the capital fund, the sewer fund?
Yeah, that's the aggregate of all funds for the township.
So in addition to what Bob's saying, could you not, also not interpret that as the problem that you've, you've communicated to us many times, that as our obligations increase, we have to shift money? So we shifted money from, the things that we would have in the past been able to spend on capital or sewer, are now being consequently, those resources are being utilized elsewhere, in that we're, we're not, our spending has increased, and, and we're, we're not doing, we're not doing that much more than that additional spending, is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, and we'll touch on that maybe in a little bit more detail with the next slide, with regard to how, so, well, if that doesn't address your point, we'll revisit it. But I think we'll, we'll touch on that next. The other, just to touch, to add on to what the manager noted with the refundings, is we've actually done refundings in 2010, 2012, and 13. So one of the things that we've been able to do is take advantage of the market, and continuously reduce those costs, those long-term debt obligations through the various refundings.
And as part of this, too, when you look at the staffing levels of where the township was, to where we are now, again, this speaks volumes, I believe, to our staff and to our employees that do a tremendous job... employees that do a tremendous job, that as we have reduced the number of staff, they've continued to do a tremendous job and they've stepped up in a number of areas. I know at the refuse area, there was a change from the rear yard pickup to curbside, which accounted for some of those losses. But again, overall, you can see where the numbers once were to where they are now. Again, this is, again, a commitment of the board to try to control spending that also ties into some of the recent contracts for addressing the long-term issues. But also, again, I can't say enough about the staff or the work they've done to continue excellent services here in the township.
So there's two major expense assumptions that we'll touch on next, and these deal with the pension and the OPEB. And the reason why they're called out and discussed specifically in this presentation, as they have been in prior years, is going back to the request of the board when the CarFAC report initially came out on the pension and OPEB situation, that there, that as part of the budget process, updates are provided to the board, at least annually, on where these stand. So this is a similar chart and graph that we showed a year ago. It's been updated to reflect 2015's numbers. I think I stepped through this a year ago, but it's probably worth touching on again, that when you look at the township's net expense, we do receive state aid annually to help defray some of the cost of the pension obligations. So when you take a look at the net township expense, 2008, roughly $711,000; 2015, we're going to be roughly $3.6 million. So this is, and perhaps touch, going into more detail, Commissioner Curley, on your point is, that increases, so while headcount has been reducing steadily, as the previous graph showed, our obligations to fund the pension program have been going up dramatically. And there's several, several major triggers that have caused this. First being, and I'll jump to the increase in the civilian plan from 10 to 11, from 700, roughly, $700,000 to 1.3 million. That was the first actuarial update that was completed after the early retirement program that the township did in 2011. I'm sorry, 2007, which, so for all the retirees that were allowed to leave early, each one had an actuarial law, or actuarial unfunded liability that went with it, which requires funding. Being that it's a defined benefit program, the funding fell on the township. So that was the first time that the township really saw actuarially the impact of that program. So that increase began the amortization. So over the next 15 to 20 years, beginning in '11, those actuarial liabilities will be funded annually. The other significant increase that jumps out is the increase from '12 to '13, both on the uniform and civilian plans, specific to the uniform, which is police, is the change in funding approach, and this was something that this board and the administration and CarFAC discussed, with regard to the past practice of allowing leave time to be included in the pension calculation. So again, that's some, that was something that the township allowed over a long period of time, but was not funding for when it came time to fund the pension program. So that was something that we recognized at that time, made the decision that we have to start funding it if we're ever going to get the programs back up and reverse the trend of reduced funding status and try to eliminate the long, the unfunded liability.
Bill, could you explain the change, allowing leave time? So what happened?
So the township, going back as far as we could find in the records, allowed leave time to be accumulated and paid out at retirement, instead of like a use it or lose it type of policy. Those leave time payouts at retirement are pensionable in this, under the police uniform program. So those payouts would then be added to the final 36 months of annual salary, or final average salary, which is the average over the final 36 months of their employment. Those lump-sum payments at the end were rolled into the pension amount. That's a past practice that through labor negotiations would have to be dealt with. I think we've talked, to some extent, about the success rate of arbiters ruling to undo benefits awarded or considered past practice. They do not go in the township's favor. So this is a past practice we're stuck with. So in, at that point, in 2013, we elected to start to fund it so that the, there's at least money there to be able to afford it for the, not only the current officers at that time, but the retirees that also carried unfunded liability for retiring with greater benefits than what was saved for. So, so as a result, the MMO, the township's contribution for the pension had to go up. At that same time, we also discussed, and this is, we've discussed it quite a bit in these meetings, is the assumed rate of return, which was at eight percent for a long time. And in 2013, we reduced it to seven and a half percent at the recommendation of the actuary, and as we had a number of residents, resident experts that recommended such, and actually, they recommended even further reduction, which we can, on an ongoing basis, contemplate, but understand that each time that assumption is reduced, there's an immediate cost increase. So the sum of all these changes is requiring the township today to spend significantly more on the program, but over the long term, it will bring the program into a much better funded status.
But Bill, we have made some headway, I think, haven't we? For example, on eligibility of employees who are retiring, I'm sorry, eligibility of employees to have a defined benefit versus a defined contribution. Didn't, we did change that in our labor negotiations, did we not?
Yeah, I was just going to segue into-
Okay.
-where we're at with that. So-
Before I leave that, Bill, so basically you're saying, from 2012 to 2013, we had an increase in our pension contribution, it more than doubled from 855 to 1.787. And you're saying that was mainly attributable to funding what the past practice had been, which was to include leave time as part of your average wage on which your pension was based?
That is correct. In addition to reducing the expected rate of return from eight percent down to seven and a half. So the combination of those two factors, yes.
So that would imply that the leave that people were taking at retirement basically doubled the amount of their, of their total average three-year wage on which the pension amount was based? Is that about right? Or how much was the leave? It sounds like a huge number.
We had cases where it was pretty significant. There were others where it was a non-factor, but there, the, we did, we asked the actuary to run the numbers over a period, a history, and the percentage they came back with was an assumed 20% increase at retirement. So it's not quite double, but there were some that were, that were pretty significant, yes.
And this had been going on for many years, presumably, and presumably the board of commissioners knew about this and were not even funding it? So that people who were on the board over these prior years would have known about this? Example, Mr. Spengler?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if the township had these kind of discussions regarding the pension obligation prior to 2010. Certainly nothing in the records-
Well, it's a nationwide problem, Rich. It's not just this board, and Mr. Spengler was on it, and so were some of our Republican colleagues.
There's, there's some, there's some history. You can go back, Commissioner Booker, and read Neil Morris's report about what he found back in '08, '09. I mean, it sort of goes back through what he could find at the time, how this came about, how it was approved. So I don't think that dockets, that document is still on the website, but it was, it was going on up until '08, '09, when it came to the board's attention.
Well, and if you look at the overall, the net township expense between 2011 and 2015, it's 300% increase. I mean, that, those kind of numbers are just staggering when looked taken as a percentage. And one wonders how that possibly could be the case.
The case was that we did not fund the pension fund properly over the last 10 years. That's the problem.
More than 10 years.
10, 15, 20 years.
Can I clarify, Bill? Did the, the leave issue does not apply in the civilian plans going forward?
Yeah, I'll use that as the segue. So as part of the-
Your microphone? Your microphone?
It's on, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. As part of the union agreements that we've entered into over the last year and a half with both the FOP and the RAIT employees, which is the Radnor Association of Township Employees, specific to RAIT, they have, they have stepped up and have seen the larger picture and with any of their new, agreed to any of the new hires, actually being excluded entirely from a pension system, those employees will be required on their own to save for retirement. Well, we have resources and opportunities for them to invest in, but it'll be, it'll be their own contributions. And then, and I'll get into OPEB in a moment, but those same employees will not be eligible for any post-retirement healthcare either. On the, with regard to the, oh, and then with the leave time, any leave time for the existing employees has to be used prior to retirement.
Non-uniform.
Non-uniform.
Right.
Non-uniform employees has to be used prior to retirement. So if, if you have, if an employee's carrying a certain balance, I'll make up a number, say, six weeks, their retirement, their, their last day of employment and their retirement date will be six weeks apart, and that leave time will have to be used. It will not be a lump-sum payment and then rolled up into the pension amount. And then with the FOP, there were reductions both in, there were increased pension contributions from the officers themselves, as well as changes to what is eligible for OPEB benefits at the time of retirement. So it's, it's a smaller benefit. But those are agreements that the FOP made, recognizing again, that the costs were increasing unrealistically, and something that had to be addressed.
But again, those are only for new hires, right? Those changes?
That is correct, yes.
So basically, what we've done is we've shifted the burden from present employees to the, to the future employees, I guess would be accurate.
No, I'm not sure I would agree with that, that summary. We've, over an evolution, the evolution of the township staff, the problem will resolve in that the obligations will not grow. And we've implemented funding procedures to begin to set assets aside to take care of the ones that are on the books today. So it's not something that'll be fixed overnight. It's not shifting the burden. It's paying for the burden as it exists today in an effort to make sure that someone who's sitting here 10, 15, 20 years from now is not having the same conversation.
Right, because they will have no, have much greater reduced healthcare benefit after retirement, and they will have contributed to their own, at a higher rate, to their own retirement. So in essence, what we're, we're saying is that current employees, the old folks, the older, under the old contract, they don't change, but everyone else changes, so that the township can catch up on its payments.
I thought more correctly would be stated that we've changed it so that we are funding these unfunded mandates, and we're assuring they don't grow and become worse.
That's true, and we're doing it on the-
No.
It's fine if you're, if you're, if you're one of the people who was grandfathered in, you had the old contracts, but the new, the new contracts. And basically, I guess, the theory is, is that you can't get any givebacks, is what, now, now I don't want Mr. Spengler to, I'm asking John Rice and Mr. White here. The theory being is that you can't get any concessions from existing employees, you can only get it from going forward, correct?
I guess my response is that we negotiated in good faith with both of the unions, came to the board with terms, and the board accepted.
You know, we tried, as I remember, the team tried vigorously, Rich, to get changes in the police contract. We got some great improvements over our existing contract, but we did not get in the police contract them to go with incumbent, incumbent officers, they would not agree to go to a defined contribution plan. And they would not agree to eliminate that 36-month averaging formula, which would, which included their lump-sum payments at retirement. We could, we tried, we couldn't. Can't get everything. And the FOP, they're not going to give away stuff that, out of the goodness of their hearts. They'll give away what's in their best interest. Some things they gave to us, some things they would not.
Okay, let's try and keep this presentation moving.
So taking a quick look at the OPEB funding plan, this was, as I touched on moments ago, the implementation, this was the first year, this was a plan that was reviewed, developed with the assistance of CarFAC and brought to the board with last year's budget, introducing a payment plan that began at $200,000 and incrementally going up by $200,000, again, over a 10-year period, which is what's being shown here by the, with the red line as it, as it ramps up, and eventually getting to what is actuarially calculated as the full ARC or the annual required contribution. Which over time, as the full annual required contribution is made, we are paying down on the unfunded portion of the liability to a point where you get caught up and then the payments start coming down. That's as the, the current retirees and employees who are eligible for the program pass away, the program, the obligation, the annual obligation starts, it starts ramping back down, and those lines will intersect, at which point it'll be fully funded. Now, obviously, it, what starts, what, so with the yellow line, what it's demonstrating is that if we did the full annual required contribution today, right now, and did it over a, roughly a 20-year period, that we would achieve full funding faster and have a huge decrease in the amount that's owed. And then the line going back up in those future years would be the replacement of police officers that get a, a smaller post-retirement healthcare benefit, and that's just growing over time. So obviously, that can change, but what is basically set in stone are the obligations that we have on the books now. So the funding plan, again, and this is what we discussed a year ago, is that it's a long-term plan, but beginning to address it now is the best approach. So 2015 budget includes $400,000 set aside to continue this, this payment program. At the same time, and importantly, any new police officer will be pre-funded, we will pre-fund the smaller OPEB benefits. So as officers are brought on, we are funding from the day they're hired, so that when they retire, the assets needed to pay for that obligation are saved and in, in the, in the trust for that employee's healthcare. So it's not a cost that the taxpayers at that time have to pay for. So basically, we as taxpayers today for officers that are coming on board are paying for that obligation as we, as we receive the benefit of that officer providing the service. And then number two is any actuarial changes to the plan will be added to the funding. So for example, we have disability retirements that are going to cause an increase, to make sure that we're funding those, so that we don't mismatch assumptions with reality and fall behind inadvertently. So general fund summary, this shows 11 through 15, what the numbers look like in total for the general fund. Again, assuming normal growth on the revenue side with, at the same millage rate for the real estate taxes. The attention here is drawn to the capital funding from, basically from the prior years into '15, jumping from $478,000 this year up to $2.4 million next year. Really, the two-point, or the 2014 and '13 numbers were not too dissimilar in tot- tot, in total, but those were funded through one-time revenues and other funding sources. So the general fund never recognized that obligation. So that's, that's what I was referring to earlier as showing that in the general fund, showing that a dedicated funding mechanism for the capital plan at some point is going to be needed to make sure that the, the various capital components are, are funded year over year instead of having years of no capital spending and then getting a windfall of revenue and trying to catch up or as the township did in prior years, issue 30-year bonds and fund the capital program with long-term bonds for short-term assets. A couple, I won't spend a lot of time, but just a couple of numbers that jump out. In 2013, we had a, again, almost 10 million in unanticipated Act 511 revenues, which were then allocated to various projects and items, which is why you see the spike up in all other, the all other category, which is basically transfers out to the other funds for stormwater, for pension, for the Willow's Bridge, for capital, for OPEB and all of the items that were included in those funding plans. But for 15, as the numbers exist now, expenses are greater than revenues by roughly 1,024, although that just went down slightly as a result of the resolution that was passed with regard to the manager's contract. So it's changed already. And this does not include any funding yet for the, the trail system that was discussed earlier this evening. So the capital plan, when we, when we talk about what the capital plan is, this, this pie chart is a demonstration of what all goes into that capital plan. I'll start with the department vehicles and equipment. That's somewhat self-explanatory. That's the moving fleet that the departments have, most of which is in our police and public works departments. And the equipment that goes along with it, say mowers, trailers, leaf vacuums, or on the police side, mobile data terminals, which are the computers in the vehicles and weapons and all of the other capital-related items that go along with those departments. We have infrastructure improvements, which the township is responsible for maintaining all of the local streets, which we do receive liquid fuel funds for to approximately $400,000 a year, which full, which funds the extent of our road replacement program. We also have in place the sanitary sewer fee. Revenue generated through that fee funds the sanitary sewer, the entire sanitary sewer program, which includes the annual operating cost, payments to the RHM as well as any kind of infrastructure replacement or improvements that are needed. And then the final piece of that, or two, two final pieces to that. One is the stormwater, which is relatively new. We have the fee that began this year that offsets the cost of those infrastructure improvements. And then the last piece, which doesn't get a whole lot of discussion, but is expensive nonetheless, are the traffic signals and the infrastructure associated with all of the intersections in keeping traffic moving around town. The other items are a little bit more self-explanatory. We have the library facilities improvements at half a million dollars next year. That was discussed at a prior meeting with regard to funding half of the grant that was applied for. The fire service contributions, which include capital contributions to both Radnor Fire Company and Bryn Mawr Fire Company. The Willow's improvements, which is zero as a result of, A, the lease agreement we have with the lake house as well as the, the understanding at this point, which is always subject to change, that the revenue generated from that lease agreement would fund any of the capital improvement, capital improvements on that site with, with the park. We haven't gotten into all those details yet, but at this point, that's the assumption that's in here. Then municipal parking lot resurfacing and then township building and ground adjustments. So the capital plan as it exists from 15 to 20, I've also included 2014 because I thought it showed a demonstration on just how much these numbers are, can fluctuate year over year, which may necessitate doing some sort of funding, financing on some of these, some of these programs like the Clem McCrone Park, anything that would require an immediate, significant amount of money to do the improvement, instead of trying to say raise taxes for a one-year improvement, spread the cost out over some useful life. But these are the different categories, again, broken out into how much their annual funding is. So for 15, we're roughly at 5 million and that number fluctuates downward until 20 where there's, there's another uptick. So the general fund forecast, now, this is jumping back to the, the operating activity, but it doesn't include capital set, or the capital funding piece. So for 15, we have the, the $1 million shortfall. And again, this is the base, which is intended to, to do just that, establish a base of where we're starting from. That's basically as we exist today. That doesn't include the OPEB funding plan. That doesn't include any adjustments in the pension funding or any of the other decision points that we're going to look to the board for direction on, which I'll segue to now. So then we'll, the forecast has different modifications, both in revenue and expenditures. The, the revenue modifications are, are the result of three major development projects that have, I'm sure everyone is at least heard of or aware of as they've been in the discussion for years. And that's with the, the assumption that the Villanova Development Plan is coming to some sort of conclusion or decision point. And this, this, at this moment assumes that it moves forward. That could, that can change at a keystroke. Those numbers can be eliminated. The Biomed Development, assuming that some sort of redevelopment takes place there, either through their submitted by right program or as part of some different programs such as the MUST. And then in the out years, when we're talking about 18 through 20, there's an assumed revenue component from a tenant paying the, the business taxes that would be applied to that property, which as of today, there are no revenues, no business tax revenues being generated since it's vacant. Then the Ardrossen Development, the houses that will be going up on the, the, the developed side of that property, as was presented a year ago, these represent transfer taxes and eventual real estate tax increases as a result of that development. On the expense side, the OPEB funding plan, as I touched on, the difference, instead of the $400,000 even, there's $59,000 added as a result of the pension disabilities that I, or I'm sorry, the, the police disability retirements that I touched on earlier. The MMO, we, we discussed, those are increases and decreases, again, depending on the different components of that funding or that, that make up the MMO year over year. And actually in the out years, we expect some of the amortizations of prior underfunding to fall off. Then to some of the decision points that we'll look to the board to as we go through this process regarding the addition of the Drug Task Force. This is the annual cost that we're forecasting with the addition of the four new officers and associated uniforms and equipment. We have the Ardrossen maintenance.
Bill, could I interrupt just for a quick second? At the very top left-hand corner, you have in millions. I'm assuming that's only the revenues you're talking about there? These numbers are thousands now?
Yeah, so you add three zeros behind all of them, yes.
The bottom ones?
Yes.
They're millions?
No, it's, it's assuming the same rounding. So I just, it's the three, it's to the nearest thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not 459 million for the OPEB funding plan. So for the Ardrossen, in the first three years, as we presented a year ago, would be the, the cost estimated for maintaining the site as it exists today. Those ramp up a bit in 18 through 20 with the anticipated installation of the trails and the additional time and maintenance that will be needed then. Solid waste, as I touched on, the addition of the two full-time employees to bring that staffing up to 20 in that division, again, rippling through to assist with better service delivery and park maintenance and highway. The Historical Society approached the board last month or two months ago with requesting dedicated funding. That's included here. And then the park capital improvements are identified separately here just because it's a major change versus what was presented a year ago. And it's, it, it is rather significant in the, right out of the box. So as you could, as you could see, just looking in total, that while there are some opportunities for some near-term one-time revenue through permitting, the total cost of the, all of these modifications would outpace revenues and require some sort of other revenue to, to offset it.
Can I just ask one quick question about the, the OPEB funding? 200 is already in our budget, so wouldn't 200 be base case? So the, the increase, the modification is another 259?
Yeah, and I honestly, I've gone back and forth on that, but ultimately decided to keep it in the modifications for two reasons. First of all, so that it's, it's at the forefront and always part of the presentation and discussion. The second reason being is that we never implemented any kind of permanent funding for it. So we never adjusted the base to fund the program. We're, we're funding it through assumed increases in the, the Act 511 taxes or the other revenues. So, I mean, you could go either way on it. If, if we were to, if we were to increase, and this is an example, the tax rate to fund that line item, I would agree then that it, it gets pulled out of here and it becomes part of the base.
Okay.
So that's, that's why it's being presented this way.
Also, what about the debt service? Are you going to hit that later?
The debt services, well, it's included as part of the debt here. If you're, are you referring to the debt service on Ardrossen?
I'm referring to the delta, our anticipated increase in debt service from Ardrossen and any other portions of the prior expenditures, capital that you outlaid, that you discussed there.
Okay, to address that item specifically, the Ardrossen funding will, will exist entirely outside of the general fund. So as proposed, the township would utilize, to the extent revenues are available, in the Park and Open Space Fund. They would, the township will use those proceeds to pay down as much as it can afford based on that activity. And then I think for a 10-year period that's forecasted, there would be an incremental tax increase to fund the gap. That's, that's as, that's the plan as, as proposed. That would all be accounted for in the Park and Open Space Fund outside of the general fund. This is presenting the general fund. There's no other, there's no other debt increases that are being proposed as part of any, any of the other capital plans at this point. That, you know, as we start getting into specifics about how we're going to fund Clem McCrone, which is a program that we've discussed in these meetings, that is roughly a million dollars, we may want to consider some sort of financing for that. We may want to consider financing for some of our other infrastructure-type programs. But at this point, there's no assumed increase in debt to fund any of those.
I do remember you were talking about the dedicated funding source for the debt service, but you also indicated that there is a gap for the 10 years. Why wouldn't that be shown on this? How's the gap going to be funded for the increase in debt service attributable to the $11 million in bonds for Ardrossen?
The gap will be, as presented, the gap will be funded through a, a millage increase. The estimate that was provided a year ago was .15 mils. So the real estate tax would go up by .15 mils and that's, that would be under the, the voted authority. And those revenues would be generated and accounted for, or accounted for entirely in the Park and Open Space Fund segregated from the general millage of 3.7511. So that's why it's not being commingled into the general fund.
Sounds like, so it's really off, off balance sheet, I guess is what we would call it. It's not in the general fund because it's, it's going to be maintained separately. But still, the source of those revenues for that gap is going to be a millage increase. Isn't the, and, and the millage increase is not shown on, on this as an increase in revenues?
Well, first of all, it's not off balance sheet. It'll be presented on the balance sheet of the Park and Open Space Fund, which is reported in our audited financial statements.
But it'll be excluded from the general revenue tabulation?
Yes, to, to, to account for the segregation and authority for those mills. It's a voted millage and we do not want to commingle that with general proceeds. We want to keep those separate. But yeah, as presented, the plan is to increase the millage by .15 and that would not be to the benefit of the general fund so that it's not being reported on this statement.
So I think based on what Bill was talking about allows it to be transparent and trackable where it is because it is voted millage. It's already been taxpayer voter-approved millage. And actually, the difference then is coming out of a fund which was established by the Board of Commissioners in the Park and Open Space Fund. So you actually have those two where they'll be shown. So this way, anybody who wants to track it knows exactly where that's at.
When you say it's voted millage, you mean what? You mean that it's, you, your view is it's already approved and you, we can build that into, you can build that into a budget without any board approval?
The residents already approved that, so the board just has to approve the borrowing, but you have voter approval.
We have voter approval on the debt. We have voter approval on the debt. There was no, there's no voter approval on, on increase in millage.
No, Commissioners voted on that.
Also, so I'm confused. So the real estate tax number for 2015, Bill, you're saying excludes any anticipated millage increase associated with the funding gap for the Ardrossen, or the Ardrossen borrowing? That 11.858?
That is, that is correct. It will not go in the general fund, nor should it, because it's not general fund proceeds. It's specific.
And one of the good things about segregating, at the end of 10 years, you can reduce that millage.
Well, yeah, on an annual basis, we'll have to evaluate whether or not the millage that is, whether the millage is enough based on the amount of transfer tax that's being deposited in that fund. So that, that'll be an annual review as part of the, the comprehensive budget review. So, and, and your, in your material that we'll prepare and distribute on Wednesday, the Park and Open Space Fund will be in there and you'll see all of that activity. And it'll be, it'll mirror the discussions that took place a year ago with the purchase agreement ordinance that was adopted. So again, this is specific to the general fund. I, and we do that on purpose to make sure that there's never, it's very clear to the taxpayers that, so if the millage stays 3.7511, that that's for general purposes. And if it stays at .15 mils for Ardrossen, that those are two very different and identifiable millage rates, instead of saying 3.8611 mils.
Are you going to cover the Parks and Rec Fund tonight or is this just for the general fund?
This is just for the general fund tonight. And we'll get into all of the other funds when we can do a more comprehensive, at one of the hearings.
At one of the hearings? I, I guess my only view on that, Bill, is that by excluding it here, we don't make it more transparent, we make it less transparent, right? It's not there and we're not going to talk about it tonight. Now you're saying, well, we'll talk about it at a later meeting. I think that, 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 that makes it more difficult for the people to track.
We just did talk about it, I heard all about it.
I would disagree with that because actually you're talking about transparency. So by doing this, you'd actually confuse it more. This is the general fund which is being presented. So actually, under the scenario I believe you're going, you'd actually make it tougher for people to track and we actually want to make things easier for residents to be able to track of why the millage is.
If, if we were going to review the other piece of it tonight, I would agree. We should, but, but by presenting just the general fund and excluding any amounts associated with Ardrossen in the 2015 budget, makes it less transparent, at least for tonight. There's no question.
Not, not in my opinion.
Right.
Well, if, if we didn't have three other public hearings and ordinances that'll be introduced and adopted over the next three months, this would be more comprehensive. But as we've done in years past, we introduce basically the general fund, which is the decision points that we need to move forward with preparing the budget based on what the board wants to see with those different modification numbers. The Ardrossen decision was basically made a year ago. So it's not any kind of, any kind of amendment to the general fund forecast as we're discussing tonight. of amendment to the general fund forecast as we're discussing tonight. So, we're taking a look at fifteen through twenty here. This includes all of those modifications that we discussed a while ago now. And as you could see, as a result of the increases to, for the various items, that there are, there's, first of all, significant fluctuations year-over-year, couple of those years being in deficits, but in the long run, the revenues resulting from that biomed site actually becoming revenue generating again helped to offset quite a bit of that.
Just for the future, we can't see the red numbers, so.
Yeah, they're a lot clearer on a screen than they are through these projectors. So, yeah, I'll clear that up in the future.
Can I ask a clarification question on the projected revenues over these next five, six years? In the, in the numbers that you're putting for money coming in from the permitting and then from the economic activity where it's appropriate, is that, does that number include a, an estimate of the parks fee?
The park impact fee? That would, it does not, for the same reason that the Ardrossen information is, because it'll, those revenues are dedicated for a very specific purpose outside of general purposes. So, that's accounted, that'll be accounted for in a separate fund.
So, but we could use those monies toward some of the park improvement numbers that we see on the screen?
If the board elects to, yes.
Capital.
Yes, it could.
So, when we get, when we get the Parks Improvement, the Parks and Rec, will that, will it have that projection in it?
It will not. I just, I just don't know where those revenues are gonna fall out, so I'd hate to start putting a capital plan against revenues that we're not sure about yet.
It's a pretty substantive number.
I, I understand it could be, yes.
Well, it's something that we should discuss, and it should be part of our discussion because our parks numbers are high. So, we're gonna have to figure out what that means and where we're gonna get the money to spend there.
Sure.
And I think that goes to some future conversation that we'll talk about tonight, the public-private partnerships, and also to be able to reduce some of those costs as well.
Okay. Thanks.
So, the other, we also have on the books a codified, a funding, a minimum funding fund balance in the general fund. So, as forecasted for 2015, this is just comparing the base with the modified, that as a result of the one-time permitting revenue over, in the first two years, that we would be compliant, but then on the back end, we would fall out of compliance and be short of our fund balance revenue policy. So, it, some, some decision or action will be needed to, to help address that. And just for clarification for those, the fund balance policy is set at fifteen percent of general fund expenditures, and then it was, that policy was amended this year, that at any point, if the Act 511 revenues are greater than thirty percent of the township's general fund, general revenue base, that the fund balance policy add ten percent to a total of twenty-five percent to help mitigate against the volatility of the Act 511 revenues. And as we discussed earlier this year when that change was made, we've seen the Act 511 revenues increase to the tune of millions from year-over-year. It could go down or up. So, additional cash reserves will help the township navigate those waters with a little bit, a little bit more flexibility, if, if we were to have another significant downturn. So, as we proceed through the public hearing process and eventual adoption of the budget, some of the direction that we're looking for include the discussion on the park improvements, Commissioner Schaefer, to your point, as well as continuing the discussion on the board's temperature, for lack of a better term, on public-private partnerships in any direction there. The use of permitting revenues, so what we're looking for there is whether or not those permitting revenues should be used for any kind of temporary funding gap, or if we should have other types of revenue adjustments, say a tax adjustment to fund any of the new programs if approved. Modified forecast items include, and this, this ties into whether, having permanent revenue sources for new programs with regard to the Drug Task Force, the sanitation employee refilling in the Public Works, as well as the Historical Society funding. So, what we'll do is, at the public hearings, step through these items and get a sense from the board on direction, and we can, we can adjust the, the numbers on the fly, so it can be more of an interactive meeting rather than a presentation, and we can see the, the benefits or outcomes of the different decisions. So, then I think that wraps up the presentation.
So, this PowerPoint will be on the website, and you said Wednesday, the worksheets will be available.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what will be distributed Wednesday and uploaded on the website will include what you've, what you've been used to seeing is a, an executive summary, all of the narratives, as well as each fund, each fund statement with line item detail and explanation as to what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
As part of this then, too, the public hearing dates, we want to modify the schedule. We originally had for the twentieth, we'd like to move that to the twenty-second, which would allow one week for the review of that, and then the third hearing would go from the seventeenth to the eighteenth of November.
Don't we have a meeting on the twenty-third?
Villanova, conditional use.
So, why do we move this from Monday, the twentieth to the twenty-second? Is there a conflict?
Yes. So, we'd like also some more time then, based on some of the direction we're gonna get from the board this evening on this, to be able to compile a better report here for the board.
That means two nights in a row for long meetings, I guess. Could we go back to, I had a question for Bill. What, where's the, where's the, in the expenditures, can you go back to the pie chart?
Right there, right there. Oops, sorry. There it is.
So, where, where are the expenditures for the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for parking kiosks? Is that an infrastructure, it's not in parking lots, right?
Yeah, we're anticipating that expense being incurred in fourteen, and it's accounted for, out of the eight-million-dollar settlement. So, it's not a, a program that's going to be funded through any kind of general fund transfer.
Okay.
So, that, the kiosks and this, the technology improvements were presented a year ago as part of the, what's gonna be included in fourteen.
And the two-point-three million in infrastructure improvements, what's the biggest items on that?
Biggest items there are the road resurfacing program, which is about four-hundred thousand a year, the sanitary sewer program, which is between two and three-hundred thousand, the stormwater program, which with the inclusion of North Wayne funding for next year, is roughly seven-hundred thousand, and then the signals, and honestly, I forget what the total of that one is off the top of my head, for next year.
So, the, the roads and the sanitary sewer work, that's really maintenance work, that's not new capital, or is it, is it repair, or is it new expansions and new infrastructure?
For, for the roads, it's a resurfacing, so it's extending the life of the road, so that would, it's falling under capital for that regard. With the sanitary sewer, yeah, in most cases, it's replacing, replacing pipe in the ground, or replacing a pumping station, which extends the life of that pumping station.
Okay. Just for everyone's reference, the, and you said we do get the liquid, we do get state money, highway funds for the resurfacing?
We do, yes.
And that's, that's number right there, is net of those, or is that, is that as a different revenue number?
No, that's, that would be the township's gross expense for the, the improvement. Let me jump over. So, I know this is kind of small, but for folks that have really big TVs, maybe they can see it. But this is the, this is the funding sources and funding uses as it exists now. So, there, there are multiple sources. So, sewer rent fees that are allocated for the capital program.
And there's four-hundred-and-seventy-six liquid fuels, I see.
Yes. So, it, and it's, again, this, the state liquid fuels mandates that that be accounted for in a separate fund, and that's all housed in the state liquid fuels fund.
Actually, the liquid fuels rate for this year went to zero. It's now, they increased the oil company franchise tax, increasing the amount of the wholesale gallon that's subject to it, and then reallocating it. So, liquid fuels rate actually went to zero. Also, the, that, can you go back to your spreadsheet at, towards the end, yeah, after this? Next one, right here. So, we have, for 2015, we're showing a negative million, and go to your next one. Okay, and right there is two million. So, that's the, that's the general fund balance is two million, and, and so we have an operating deficit plan based on these with a fund balance that exceeds that? Is that what I'm reading?
Now, what this, what this slide is showing is that with the one-time permanent revenues from the development projects and the inclusion of all of those additional expense items, that the general fund would have a surplus in fifteen, a two-point-seven million. This, this statement here is the balance within the general fund. So, we would, that would project a ending fund balance in the general fund of eleven-point-one million, or in excess, a two-point-three million over our fund balance policy.
Okay, well, I know Commissioner Sprangler is going to be very upset that I don't quite understand the difference between these two slides, but go back, so what's, what's the million-dollar negative showing us then on your other? All right, so what's that? So, that's revenues and expenses, and we're showing revenues in excess, oh, no, we're showing expenses in excess of revenues. So, this is the base, so what are you, what are you showing here? What's the difference between these two?
Sure. So, the, the difference between the million-dollar deficit shown here, whoops, and the two-point-seven million-dollar surplus shown here is these adjustments here. So, we, we would be adding five-point-six million to revenues and adding one-point-eight million to expenditures, which changes the outcome from a negative million to a positive Which, again, in, one of the reasons for, for showing not just fifteen, but also a five-year forecast is while that seems good for fifteen, there are still issues that would have to be dealt with for the, for the future years. So, coming up with a little bit different funding plan for some of those programs, if we were to add them, would probably be a good idea.
And also, that assumes a lot of revenue in 2015 from two projects.
It does.
Is that realistic to get all that revenue?
Well, if the projects, if the projects.
One of them, one of them's not even, one of them hasn't even come before the board I guess, I guess you're not, you don't want to address that. It seems quite a bit, I guess, that we're banking on here.
Well, we're not banking on it, we're merely demonstrating the impact if it were to be included. It's as easy as going into the spreadsheet and moving those dollars out to future years if that were to take place, so.
Understood, understood.
Well, you raised the point, so just in case anyone who's watching doesn't understand.
I think even if those projects are approved, it's gonna be difficult to realize that revenue in the 2015 year.
Yeah, so if that were the case, and if, if that were the direction and the, what everyone felt comfortable with, moving them out changes the fifteen revenue to, instead of the two-point-seven surplus down to five, five-seventy-three, but it pushes, it, it actually improves the sixteen and seventeen outcome. So, that's, that's part of what we're gonna do as part of this process, is review and evaluate and ultimately nail down where, where we feel most comfortable with this.
For the Parks and Rec Fund, we are, we're gonna show some different numbers that would need to be layered in here. Are there any other funds that will have changes as large as what we're anticipating for the Parks and Rec expenditures and revenue based on Ardrossen? Or is that the biggest one?
No, that's, that's the biggest one. The capital fund is, the expenses, the activity in the capital fund is, is housed in a capital improvement fund, so that, and that's technically outside of the general fund, but it's, it gets its money primarily from the general fund, so that's why we, we aggregate those two together. As far as the other special revenue funds that we have, no. The Park and Open Space Fund, because of the Ardrossen purchase, is the only one that has significant activity. The Willow's, the Willow's Fund might be another one with the inclusion of rent income as part of that lease, but there's, we don't have any offsetting expenditures to identify at this point.
Rich, could I ask, how, how much more do you want to go? We have people here tonight that have been waiting since seven o'clock to do stormwater presentations, and the Wayne Business Association is here, and there may be other people, Mr. Harrington wants to speak. So, do you think maybe we could come, come back to your questions if you still have more and move into the rest of the agenda?
Our staff is all, also always available for questions when you need detail explained at all times to us.
Well, actually, I would have been done, and we could have been proceeding. I'm done.
Are you looking for input from us on this, initial input from us on this, or would, how would you like to receive that?
We'd like to get it now if we could, some broad, broad brush parameters.
I have just two brief thoughts. You know, one of the major things we have to decide, as was pointed out tonight, is whether and how much we want to factor in these sort of nebulous revenue sources that may or may not be coming, and when they come, we're not assured of how much they're going to be, but we know they're coming. So, that is something that we have to really factor in, in what, when we decide what kind of increased spending we're going to do. And some of the increased spending that we're considering, especially the staff, you know, whether we hire four new officers and two new Public Works employees, you know, once you make that hire, it's not nebulous at all, and it's consistent from here to eternity. So, that's something I, I'm a little worried about using those revenue sources as sort of justification or a basis for making those spending decisions. I'm, I would be more comfortable using those revenue sources as a basis for our decisions on the capital, especially the park improvement funds, because a lot of those expenses are not cast in stone. A lot of them, we can make, you know, we can put them in our capital budget, and if things are great and we do get these great numbers from these new projects, then we can fund them. If not, we can put them off. So, you know, whatever sort of scheduling gymnastics that takes, I would really prefer to use those, those sources of income that we're not sure of for those types of projects in our capital budget. And I'm not, I have no suggestion right now on how we, how we fund the consistent staff increases, but, you know, and maybe some of those new revenue sources are predictable. You know, maybe only certain aspects of it are not predictable. So, those are my initial thoughts. I think we have to have a long discussion, obviously longer than tonight, about what the long-term costs to us are specifically going to be with these six new hires, and, you know, whether we're in a position to do that right now. Anybody else?
Sure, I'll give you, so my, my visceral reaction to what I saw tonight, I, I just think it's gonna be very, very problematic to add staff. It's, it's a very expensive thing. This is the crowding out that you've warned us about, so it's not like it's a surprise to anybody, but given all the numbers I'm seeing and the projections, I think it's gonna be very hard-pressed to add staff. The development money, wow, that's pretty large. I'd have to see how much it's gonna cost us to understand how, how, I know we're supposed to have a general one-for-one relationship, I don't know how we're gonna address that, but I don't, I don't know how. I see the revenue values being very large, I don't know what the added costs are to us, so I would need that before I could advise you on how I would agree to spending it. Similar to my first point, I don't think we have the luxury of
Similar to my first point, I don't think we have the luxury of discretionary capital expenses. So I just don't see where we have the money for parks and trails and all these things that we want to do. I know I've kind of lost track of, you know, which I'm going to have to do between now and the end of the year. I'm going to have to improve my own understanding of our capital plan. But given, given the expenses that are beyond our control and the patterns that I've seen over the last four or five years, I think we're going to be hard-pressed to find discretionary money for infrastructure, or for the discretionary aspects of it. I liked what you described on Ardrausen. I wasn't aware that you were planning on presenting it that way, but I believe I understood it, and I agree with your assessment that that's the most transparent way to present it. So at this point, I'm supportive of you pursuing that mechanism. And then my last item is just that general, one of the concerns I've had is it seems to me that the, we're getting capital items month after month after month, and what I need to see is capital all at one time so I can prioritize. So that's something that, you know, I'll have to do in the next, with your help over the next six weeks. So those are my thoughts at this point to your presentation.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else?
I just wanted to talk about the library bill. You had in there 500 for the library, right? But that's, that's what it is for 2015. That's the number that's in the budget.
Yeah, that would be for the township's contribution of the half, for the local share of the grant.
Right. And what about the other 250 that we approved last meeting or two meetings ago? That's for 2014.
Well, the total amount that we would be setting aside for the library is 500,000. That's the amount that we would have to have ready if the grant comes through.
Okay, all right.
Of that 500,000, we have.
250 already there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that was 2015. That's not in addition to?
That is correct.
Any other comments? Any commissioner wants to share? Okay, so I'm sure that you'll be hearing from us all individually over the next week or so with other thoughts, and you'll incorporate all of that.
Just one other item there is, I'll ask the million-dollar question, no pun intended. Does the board have any flavor for a tax adjustment?
Bob, the tax, the adjustment to me depends upon the distribution of what we're getting for the adjustment.
Sure.
I mean, for me, the dilemma I have is that there's a, there's a lot of spending that the board has approved over the last two or three years that I have not approved. And now my dilemma is, part of the reason why we would have to have a tax increase is to pay for the things that I haven't wanted to spend or money on. So the answer isn't yes or no at this point, it's we got to see it in the context of what our options are.
Okay.
I mean, I think you can work on the assumption that we all want as little, zero to less than zero, and if we can achieve that, wonderful. And as close as we can get to achieving that, if we need to look at an adjustment to keep it as low as we possibly can.
Right.
No, that's not very helpful.
The tax increase should be zero on this piece. We already have built-in a one or two, whatever, it's 1.2 mil increase on the other fund, and we already have a stormwater fee that we've imposed. So I think our base ought to be zero on this piece. There's already, even with zero, there's a built-in increase.
Okay, so let's move along. Thank you for that really wonderful presentation, and we look forward to seeing the extended version.
I'll move the approval of resolution 201496 engaging a disclosure and pricing agent for the upcoming Ardrausen sale. The VADA Board of Commissioners by this resolution appoints PFM to serve as the discount and pricing agent for the bond financing to acquire the Ardrausen open space at a price of $7,500.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to say I'm very pleased with the reduction in the, what you estimated the price would be for this service. I think this is a much more appropriate number than the one that was floated when we first considered doing this. Do we have any questions or comments?
Could you tell us, all we know is the initials PFM. There's no explanation of who they are.
Public Financial Management is the company.
They do our pension funds, for one thing.
Mock and Hawk does.
No, Mock and Hawk's the actuary. PFM manages their fund.
Bill, you want to give us a little background?
PFM is a financial advisor.
Yes.
Well-known, well-respected.
Yes, they're, exactly as Commissioner Booker summarized, they're very well-respected municipal advisor. That's what they, that's what they're expert in. Currently, and unrelated, they, we have engaged, the township engages them to manage the assets for the pension plan. So we know that part of their shop through that program. What we went through from the last board meeting till tonight is we put the RFP out, we received four responses, we interviewed all four candidates, and I think we were impressed with all four. We actually, it was a difficult decision, in a good way, that we had four very good candidates that presented and wanted to be part of our team here. At the end of the day, based on the reputation of the firm, the client base, and the references, PFM is the way to go.
Hey, any other comments or questions from commissioners or staff? Any public comment?
Chair. We were led to believe that there would be an opportunity to discuss the Ardrausen situation, procedure, and I guess I was wrong about that, because this is not, it's not going to be an open discussion tonight about the acquisition of Ardrausen and the amounts, et cetera. Is that correct?
It is not on our agenda tonight. This is tangentially.
And I was led to believe it would be, and that's why Mr. Huff and I are here tonight, because we, and thank you, Mr. Higgins, for respecting our time. But the, it's a breakdown in communications, so I apologize, and to my friend, Mr. Huff, who was going to give a very interesting speech tonight about Ardrausen. And I have lots of questions, and when will that time be that we can discuss?
Well, their final, are you talking about the open space purchase or about the development?
The development and open space purchase, both.
Okay, the development, it will be on our agenda for final approval, I believe, at our next meeting. I think they're, they've gone through.
Yeah, we thought it was going to be this meeting, at least I thought it was. So it's a breakdown in communication.
We have public participation, and you can speak about that, public participation if you want.
No, I prefer to wait until appropriate time and discussion.
So, but to finish answering your question, the development aspect of it will be discussed when their plans, their final approval is in front of us in probably the next meeting or two. The actual purchase itself of the open space, which is a separate issue, will occur when we are discussing our bond, you know, what kind of debt we're going to take out when we issue our bonds.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. That would probably.
Thank you, you clarified that.
Well, Chad, I mean, right now, we're talking about the debt service, the incremental cost associated with that, and we did talk about that tonight, so if you have comments on that, this might be an appropriate time.
Well, no, I think the appropriate time will be when we get into a deeper discussion about it. It would be peripheral at the moment, I think.
I don't think we're going to get into very deep discussions.
Well, I would like to think that we have an open discussion that will clarify the acquisition as was proposed, and I'd like.
Yeah, tonight, we will not be doing that, but we will do that at a future meeting.
Well, I hope we do, too, and I, thank you, Mr. Higgins, I apologize.
Thank you. We were taking comment on the motion to engage our pricing agent. Is there anybody who has public comment on the discussion we've had and the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And it passes by a vote of six to nothing.
I'll move the approval ordinance 201408 for the 2014 appropriation amendments.
Okay, this was, this is, this was introduced at our last meeting, and we went over in detail the amendments to our 2014 budget. Bill, do you have anything to add?
I'll second.
I could go through the presentation.
Yeah, no, I don't think we need to see the presentation again. I mean, there haven't been any changes.
No, nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed. Do we have any commissioners who would like to ask questions or make comments on what we discussed last time? Anybody on staff?
Well, I just want to voice my concern once again, that we're using, essentially using the 8 million, the part of the 8 million dollars to make up for these emergencies rather than the fund excess, fund balance, because it's called a rainy day fund, and that's what most of this money is going for, is those two wonderfully rainy days we had. So I have a fundamental problem with it. Bill explained the importance of it doing it that way because of bond ratings and all that kind of stuff, and I appreciate that, but fundamentally, I don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, anybody from?
Wasn't this, this is part of this, was for our extra costs associated with snow and other removal from the winter, and this is not going to have any effect on our budget presentation, or will this have an effect on fund balance or otherwise?
The impact it has on the 2015 budget discussion is that it'll impact where we're projecting to end 14, so it'll affect where we think we're starting 15. And the numbers, as I presented earlier, assume this ordinance, yes.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing no public comment, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, say aye. Any opposed? And it passes by a vote of five to one with Commissioner Nagel opposed.
I'd like to approve resolution 201497 establishing the accounting and distribution policy for the AT&amp;T lot parking revenue with the Wayne Business Overlay District pursuant to ordinance 2010-20.
Could we have a second?
I'll second it.
And Bill, can you give a quick synopsis of this, what we're trying to do with this resolution?
Sure. This is, it's been an issue, at least over the last four years, coming to some sort of more permanent agreement on the treatment of these funds. It goes back to an ordinance that the commissioners adopted in 2000, which established parking fees and how those fees should be used with regard to the AT&amp;T or the Bellevue Lot. That ordinance was subsequently amended in 2000, in April of 2010, which simply changed who the payments should be made to. They should be made instead of the enhancement, Community Enhancement Trust to Radnor Township, but it emphasized that promoting, that the funds are for the purpose of promoting additional improvements within the downtown business district. So we, the township collects revenue through kiosks at the AT&amp;T or Bellevue Lot. So the intention behind this resolution is to work with the Wayne Business Association in identifying and proceeding with projects and allocating those funds to make sure that they are indeed used as ordinance 2000-12 and 2020-20 mandate that they're used within the downtown business district.
I have a couple of questions. Bill, my recollection is we had, we've had this debate in the past few years, and essentially this would mean that we give them the money, we provide the money each year, and then they're free to spend it, as opposed to the form that we've had in the last few years where we hold the money until they come to us with a project, and then we would release the money on a project-by-project basis.
Yes, and, yes and no. We would require that the WBA report back to the board on any spending under 7,500. To the extent that a project is going to exceed that amount, they have to come to the board for prior approval. So that, we basically applied the same rules of the charter on spending at the administration level to this program as well. So it, that was a way of balancing that issue.
What's the intent of paragraph three, then, that says that we would make them annual payments in, excuse me, in November?
Yes, they would, they would hold the funds. The money would go to them as a way to make the accounting and the recognition of that revenue very clean and clear.
Right.
Then they would come back to the board for anything over 7,500.
Right, so we would lose, I mean, this was a debate we had, we had it three years ago, and it was a four-to-three vote with the four deciding to release the money and three of us wanting to hold the money on a project-by-project basis. And then the administration came in and adopted, changed the policy for a variety of reasons, but we haven't made the, we haven't made the contribution on an annual basis. We've made the contribution on a case-by-case basis since Bob's been here. And I think that the way that we're doing it now is the way that we should continue to do it. And Jim, to the, if you remember the North Wayne Crosswalk, essentially, that was, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but my understanding of the way that you viewed it is that this is money that we should be able to, you know, it's taxpayer money, and we should have say in how it's spent, and we had to get permission from someone else to.
It was a different fund.
No, it wasn't. It was the same fund. So my sense is that this is, this money is better kept here, and the entities that want to use it can come to us on a case-by-case basis and identify the project, and then we release the projects, the funds on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, the crosswalk that we did build on North Wayne Avenue was comprised of, well, we got a contribution of $60,000 from the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust to underwrite some of our costs for that. I don't think we're talking about the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust.
I know, but it's the same logic. It's just.
No, but that money didn't come from, it came from our general revenue.
No, it came from, it came from money that we get as part of.
They no longer get any money. It came from a fund that they generate money for, but they don't get any more revenue.
But now, essentially, what we're doing is, we're going, we're doing that same issue with another entity. We're giving, we're giving an entity money, and then we're losing the authority to control how that money is spent.
But we have a clause in here requiring that we approve their expenditures, so we still do have control over how they're spending their money. We're retaining that control.
But I think Don's point, is it in the interests of government to allow government money to be given over to private enterprise for expenditures that benefit private enterprise? Or, am I stating it too narrowly, does the expenditure benefit the public as well as private enterprise?
Well, I mean, this is, was on a more grander scheme, an effort at helping our local businesses and keeping our downtown vibrant, and allowing them to have some participation in determining how it's spent, because it's coming from their customers, basically. These revenues are coming from fees paid by their customers. So that was the, that was the impetus of this whole thing when it was set up, was our support of our local businesses and keeping our community, our economic community vibrant. So in my view, that's an appropriate role for us. I mean, we can disagree on that. I mean, I think that's inappropriate. I think we should be working on our economic development for big businesses and small.
Yeah, I would agree that it's appropriate, just my sense is that when there's, when there's an expenditure, come to the board and we'll authorize the money for the expenditure.
Right, Bill, you said expenditures only over 7,500 would come back?
Yeah, those would require prior board approval. Any dollars that are spent on this program would have to be reported back to the board. It's just they don't, they wouldn't require prior approval for anything up to 7,500. And again, we're just, we're tying the charter language as it exists.
But every year, they come to us to report, we can change this ordinance and not give them the money. I mean, we're, what we're doing is we're saying to Wayne Business District, we want you to handle the money and make some of the decisions on how to improve the Wayne Business District to your benefit, and over 7,500, if you have a big project, then come to us and talk about it. I mean, that's what we're doing. You know, they're generating the money and the revenue with their employees.
We are losing the capability to spend it, though, on our own. So that, we would have the capability to veto a project that they would present to us, but we would lose the capability to spend money on a nonprofit project.
How much funds a year are we talking about on the average?
20,000.
About 20,000.
So 20,000. So what we're saying is, is that for the benefit of our business community in Wayne, we are taking this 20,000 in funds and letting them work to help improve our business community. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And we did stipulate within there that any dollars must be spent on public improvements.
Yes.
So satisfying the sentiment that the general public should benefit from these So satisfying the sentiment that the general public should benefit from these dollars as they're spent.
But again, and under $7,500, they, they would only, we would only know about it after the fact. They would, it could already be spent. And then, and we couldn't, even if we didn't approve it, if they already did it, we're out of luck.
Well, we could, that's why it goes on to say that in any time, for lack, at any point, the Board can withhold future funding or canceling the distribution treatment altogether. So I mean, ultimately, the Board would have that control.
Also, also explain to me the accounting issue. You said it makes the accounting clean to do this. Explain that. What do you mean by that?
Well, the, yeah, so all the parking revenue, and this, this kind of goes back to our discussion about why the, the Arderson money needs to be accounted for in a separate fund, is that the, all the kiosk money and all the parking revenue money from all of the lots in the township are deposited into the general fund. Yet only the revenue from the AT&amp;T Lot is subject to this requirement from this ordinance. So what, what we're, what the accounting would be on here is that particular revenue would be in a line item, or that particular expenditure would be identified in its own line item as a contribution as part of this, this resolution. So it'd be very clean to, to see exactly the money coming in and the money going out. Right now, the money comes in, we, we choose projects to help fund, and the money goes out, but there's no real accounting for every dollar. There could, we could, we could overspend the revenue by a hundred bucks one year and underspend it by a hundred the next. So that's, it's, it's certainly not anything that's material or significant. It's just cleaner with the segregated accounting. If, if ultimately we decide to keep this in-house, I think the recommendation's going to be that we, we set up a whole separate fund, as long as this ordinance is on the books, just to make sure we're complying with the ordinance.
Well, ultimately, I think legally, the township gets the money and then immediately distributes it, right? So it's, it is as if we are taking public money and immediately turning it over to the use of, of a private entity, right? There's, this, this, this money, the AT&amp;T Lot is public money, no matter how you slice it. It's public money, and you're really, in essence, turning over custodial and, and ownership and title to that without ever having it go into the public coffers. So I think the question is, is that proper? And I think that's what this resolution does.
Well, I mean, it, it, it comes into, it comes into the public coffers and then is distributed. If we were to proceed as this suggests, it would, we would deposit it, and on an annual basis, we would total the amount up and then distribute it. So it would flow through the township. And in that sense, the, the accounting treatment would be proper. I guess that this is the debate that the Board has with regard to how those funds are accounted for.
Bill, a point of clarification, because it's been like three years since we really dug into this the last time. My memory, which admittedly is getting worse every year, was that it, it's not the parking revenues, it's the fee revenues that some of the restaurants pay, which ultimately came out of a zoning hearing board decision. That's the only thing we're talking about.
But the fees are for parking, to provide parking.
No, 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 wait a minute. Bill just talked about things like kiosks and all. I want to make sure we all understand, we're only talking about the fees that the restaurants that were affected by that zoning board hearing, decision are the ones we're talking about.
Yes.
Period. And that was actually not, it was because they didn't have enough parking, so they, they paid for shares in the Bellevue Lot, and I think we oversubscribed it two to one or something.
Yeah, that was the genesis of the program as adopted with Ordinance 2000-12.
And what's the difference between what you're proposing now, with the exception of the control of over $7,500, than what we used to do when we gave the money to RECT?
Well, the only, the difference is the interpretation that the revenue generated at the AT, the only difference is, is the type of revenue that's generated at the AT&amp;T Lot. It's, it says parking revenue. So the parking revenue itself is different because the fees that you're referring to no longer exist, and instead, there's kiosk revenue that's generated at that site now.
How can they no longer exist? It was a zoning hearing board decision that they had to pay it.
Yeah, we changed it.
Yeah, it was, it was undone, and we had several meetings with representatives of the local restaurants, and it was undone, basically.
So Ellis isn't paying those fees anymore?
Right.
All right. So I have some comments about the RECT section of this, but Chris, did you have something you wanted to add to that conversation we just had about the underpinnings?
I just want to make sure, you guys understand, the revenue stream has changed over the years. We understand it's coming from kiosks, but the main thing with the WBA is we always wanted to make sure through transparency that some of that kiosk money was going to remain in the town of Wayne. However it may be, our main goal is to make sure, I mean, we advertise, we create events, we support the businesses, you know, in the town, and that's our only goal, as you're well aware of. And we just want to make sure, and I believe that some of this accounting came up, so it can be transparent of what money is going, we could see what money's going back into Wayne.
Right.
However it may be spent, of course, would meet your approval as well as ours.
Okay.
To that extent.
Great.
But that's our main goal.
Thank you. So aside from the underpinnings that we just discussed, that I, clause number four, I had a little bit of concern about. The, the reason for having this is that there's a significant amount of money in RECT still sitting there that was derived in the same fashion from parking fees. So it's, it's the same flavor of money that has sort of this imprint of government collection. And it is our goal that we get that money spent down because it was collected to improve downtown Wayne. So it is our goal that as we spend this money, about $20,000 a year from the AT&amp;T Lot, that, that the WBA seeks a match from RECT for each project. And that way, you know, it's sort of, if we're funding it, they're funding it, and we can spend that down and kind of be rid of that aspect of it. However, it does complicate matters a little bit, so for each project, there would be an obligation to make a formal request. And it also would complicate it even further if, for whatever reason, the RECT said no, we don't like that project. So I, I mean, and the way it's drafted now, I think that would, it would be very complicated. So I, I wanted to propose some alternate approach that would, instead of just distributing the money and asking for like a 50% match for the lump sum that you get every year, which I think would be difficult to access since they wouldn't have information about precisely what projects that you were planning, you would do it by a project-by-project basis. And so the, the language would read instead that for each expenditure of funds generated by the Lot, the WBA would seek a 50% match from the RECT until all those funds were spent down. And that way, you're not, you know, if for whatever reason they decline, it doesn't stop you in your tracks and you can't, you know, you're not going to have to stop that project and then come back to us and ask, what should you do? I mean, if you don't get the money for that project, you don't get the money for that project from them, and then you hit them up for the next one. I can't imagine a world where they're not going to match our funds for projects downtown, but...
Well, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be easier to do it the way it says and have them present each year a $20,000 budget on projects to the Enhancement Trust and say, this is the 20,000 that we're spending on these projects, and we'd like you to match it with $10,000?
Twenty thousand.
What's that?
It'd be 20%.
Fifty percent of what we spend, right?
Right.
So if you were getting 20...
No, 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 50% of the project. So it would be, for every dollar we spend, they spend.
Okay. Well, then they could, each year, they could present a budget and say, these are the projects that we're spending the money on, and we'd like you to fund 50% of these projects, instead of going project-by-project and every time there's a vote on this $7,000 project, this $4,000 project, this, you know, just, they're going to have a budget, they're going to know what they're going to spend the money on each year, they're not going to say, well, good, let's have this money and then let's think about, you know, they're going to...
I don't know if that that's true. I, I don't know that they will have a budget.
What, do you think they're going to accumulate that money year to year and build up a fund?
No, I don't think, I...
They're going to spend it every year. They're going to have $20,000. Wayne Business is going to come together, they're going to come with proposals, and they can, and then they can present that proposal to the township. Here's our budget, here's what we want to spend the money on, these are the projects, and they ask the Enhancement Trust for that. It's one thing, rather than every time they wanted to spend money, go to Enhancement Trust and get another vote, another meeting. Why don't they just do it once a year, you know, and make it simple, make it simple for the Commissioners? Then we'll know exactly what their plans are, the Enhancement Trust, and then we'll know whether the Enhancement Trust contributes or not. I mean, it's just easy.
I agree that that would be a better system, for sure. I don't know that that's realistic, that at the beginning of every year, that the WBA is going to have a list of projects they're going to do in the next year, exactly how much they cost, and be able to bring that to RECT. And we haven't had that experience.
What if they broke it down by quarter? Every...
A year would be better.
Three months.
Yeah, yeah, we're not talking...
We do have a list of projects, and we have presented some already.
What's your opinion of that? Do you think the RECT would just match the lump sum payment?
I'm not sure, I can't speak for it.
No, I'm not saying match the lump sum payment. I'm saying, we're getting, we're getting this amount from the township. These are our projects, and this is how much they cost, and we'd like you to contribute 50% to this project, this project, and this project, and this is how much it costs you.
Right. My big question, I think, is after the, that fund runs out...
Yeah, well, then we're done with it.
Are we still, well, are we still going to be able to come to you for a certain percentage of the kiosk money yearly?
You'll still have entitlement to the money that comes in pursuant to our ordinance.
Yeah.
Right. And you just won't have the obligation to match it anymore.
We're just looking for a way to spend down this money that's just sitting there.
Oh, trust me, I know, everybody is.
Yeah, so, so by us giving you...
It won't take long.
Yeah, well, let's give you this money each year, and then you're going to them with these projects, you can get their approval, and then we can get, and then we'll be done with the Enhancement Trust.
With the money that's left in the RCT, we can figure it out.
All right, why don't we do this? Let's just assume you're right and that that, that's a realistic approach, because if it is, that is the best approach. Let's, if we went forward with it as drafted here, your first year's experience is you go ask for this match...
Right.
And you get shut down, then you come back to us and we'll amend it. Because that is the simplest way. You're right. And if it works, fabulous. Then it's once a year, you get your match from whatever we're giving you, and it would be, then you don't have to do it project-by-project. If that doesn't work, we'll have to amend, you know, amend it so it does work project-by-project. All right. So I take back my concerns, I won't make a motion, and we're talking about this as it stands, as it's written. Any other comments?
Just, Bill, do we, the lease payments, we're, we're a tenant at AT&amp;T. Right?
Yes.
Do you, do you know how much we're, we pay AT&amp;T?
Dollar a year. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a dollar a year.
Oh, it's nothing, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other comments or questions from Commissioners or staff? Anybody from the public want to comment? Okay, so I will call the vote. All those in favor of this policy as drafted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So it is a three-three vote, and it does not pass.
I think we need to recast it based on the discussions we had.
Okay. All right, well, we will...
All right, as long as it fails, why don't, why don't we ask the Association to come in with a schedule? So we can have it in black and white in front of us, what they want to do, and estimated dollar amounts, and we can make a better decision on, on this.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Well, I think we already have that, but...
Well, John, what's your, what's your concern, John? I don't understand your concern.
The way this is written, I don't think it accomplishes what Don spoke about, what I spoke about. I think it, it's not maintaining air control. I'd like to see it a more formal way. We talked back when this whole thing was unraveling three years ago. One of the things that we talked about at that time was having them present us projects. And then I forget why that things just evaporated. In fact, I would like John to show me the legislation that undid the prior way we were doing it.
Yeah, dude, I remember, I remember.
I don't, so I want to say it, Bill. I don't doubt you, I just want to say it myself. And...
Because I had the same thought you had.
You know, I'd like to see it recast.
All right. Well, we'll get back to the drawing board.
So then the, there's a consensus that if it came back, recast as they submit with a list of projects, we release the money on an annual basis, that the Board would approve that, but in a just, they get the money and then they tell us what, what they want to do, the Board doesn't seem to be...
Right. I think we should...
And are you supportive of the, the requirement for the RECT match? Because now we're going to get...
Well, I'll explore it a little bit more. I mean, it sounds to me like all you're doing is taking from one nonprofit to another. I don't know why we would value one versus another.
Because they're not spending the money, it's just sitting there.
Madam President, if I may, maybe I'd suggest a subcommittee meeting of the Board to meet with the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust, Wayne Business Association, hammer it out, that committee, then bring it back before the Board.
Excellent suggestion. What is the subcommittee committee?
Hold on a second. My sense is that the Wayne Business Association, if, if there's a bottleneck of spending, my sense is that the Business Association is going to be better prepared to address that than a subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners. So, so I, I don't see the benefit of a subcommittee meeting to address this.
Well, I think the benefit of that is you actually work a lot of the details out, so when you bring legislation in front of the Board, the subcommittee's already gone through and hashed through that and come up with an agreement, so this way, when it comes in front of the Board, you've already hashed out all the details.
Okay, well, I tell you, what I would prefer to see would be the, the WBA come to us with that annual list and say, this is, this is, you know, they'll get a sense of the budget from staff, they'll come to us with a list, and then I'd like to see the WBA pressure the RECT to contribute. My sense is that's going to be the most effective way to, to get the money that we've dedicated to the downtown flowing into downtown.
All right, well...
I'd be glad to contact the RECT folks and talk to them, too. I mean, that was another concern I had with this. It was like we were legislating a requirement on them that we really had no authority to do, and they weren't here to either say yea or nay.
No, we were just legislating the requirement for a request.
Can I, can I ask one thing with the Commissioners? Do we all agree, I guess you'd say, that if, with the line items, with a certain percentage of the kiosk money going to the WA, is something we could work out in the future?
Yes, I think there's a broad consensus that the money will be dedicated to the downtown. It's just the, the mechanism by which it, by which it, by which it is released that we have a difference of opinion.
But you can't, you can't use the phrase a percentage of the kiosk money. It's just the AT&amp;T Lot. Don't say percentage of kiosk, because there's a lot of kiosks. So just say AT&amp;T Lot.
They will take all three lots, it's all...
No, just say AT&amp;T, don't say percentage of kiosk.
You got it.
Got it.
I understand. No, that's fine.
All right, well, we'll get this worked out.
Thank you.
And perhaps we can put together some language that's more in line with, you know, taking, having individual approval of projects without delay. Okay? Are we moving on now to Public Works and Engineering?
Yes, we have our faithful servants on the Stormwater Advisory Committee present in the audience. They've been here since 6:55. It's now 10:05. Heather Gill and Paul Bergmeyer. Heather is Chairwoman of the Committee. Paul is the Chief Cook and Bottle Washer for the Committee.
Before we get started, the playground looks phenomenal, doesn't it?
I have to agree, and Tammy Cohen did a great job of Steve Mercini.
Well, you had a lot to do with it, too, Heather, thank you.
It does, it's great. We've been there almost every day.
So Heather, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Heather Gill, and I have Paul Bergmeyer with me tonight. There were two topics that were listed under Public Works and Engineering for the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee that I'd like to discuss and answer any questions that you might have. The two items are the proposed credit program and impervious billing for single-family residents, and provide you with a brief update on our project priority list. We put forth a memo on September 8th, 2014 of this year. We, this is included in the packet tonight. We worked over the last six months to put together a comprehensive review of the Stormwater Management Credit Incentive Program. We've looked through 15 different municipalities, their codes, processes, and it includes also in the attachment tonight, the different cities and towns where we've reviewed their credits and incentive programs for residential and commercial properties. Our intent is to provide a financial benefit for property owners to improve stormwater conditions while following a smart business practice of minimizing administrative overhead to Radnor Township and implementing and managing this program. We're putting forth a incentive program for single-family residents, and we're putting forth a credit program for ODP, other developed properties. In this memo, it talks about an incentive program for storm, for single-family residents that would include a rebate for residents if they provide documentation that they put forth a rain barrel, a rain garden, vegetative swale, something that would promote the BMPs on a residential level. Included is a draft that we've put together that we would like to get a recommendation to implement for single-family residents. And it would be a $50, as I mentioned, rebate towards purchase of some sort of installation of rain barrels infiltration system sometime by June 30th of 2015.
Can I just quickly ask you?
Sure.
So on that, is that only, that would only apply to, from the time that we institute this, things that are purchased from then forward?
Correct.
So if somebody last year purchased a rain garden and came in with a receipt, that would not be included?
Correct, as of when this was implemented in 2014 of this year. The Stormwater Impact Fee, our Stormwater Advisory Credit Committee.
Okay, great. I, I just, I think maybe we should put that on the flyer so you don't get a lot of calls about, oh, well, I put this in two years ago, can I get my $50?
Well, wait, you're, I think you're saying two different things. You were saying since the implementation of the stormwater fee, you're saying since the passage of this recommendation.
Well, the fee, the fee in our Stormwater Committee started in January of 2014. So from January 2014 forward until a date such as June 30th of next year, if you would provide a receipt, that we could, we could provide a rebate of $50 for single-family residents.
Is that what you were saying?
That sounds completely reasonable.
January, January 1st, 2014.
Correct.
And that's your recommendation?
Correct.
Why are you, why are you picking January 1st, 2014?
We just thought that was an appropriate time that our committee had started, that the stormwater impact fee had started, and we just believe that was appropriate for our committee, and for the benefit, I mean, to, to put a rain barrel that someone installed five years ago.
Right.
You know, I just think to be current would be the best beneficial way to go forward.
Why? What, what's the policy? What, I mean, other, why, isn't it just as valuable?
It is just as valuable, but this is something that.
As a matter of fact, I would argue it would be more valuable because they did it before somebody was offering them any benefit to doing it.
Well, that's something I can go back to our committee and discuss. I mean, it's not set in stone, we're just picking a jumping off point to provide a credit.
We have your recommendation.
Yeah, I think it's very reasonable.
Well, well, either, either we make it as of the time we adopt it, or we make it some other time, but it's.
That is, January 1st is when this program began. That is when we started.
It has to be cut off sometime.
Okay, well, I'm not sure it does.
That is the infancy of this program, was January 1st, 2014.
I just heard two different things. You were saying, I heard two different things, so. January 14th.
We have the same thing.
Heather, I was going to ask you, I don't want to interrupt you if you, but interrupt your flow. You, you're okay with a refund and rebate program, but your memorandum feels that a credit program for residential properties would be cumbersome and costly to administer.
Correct.
Help me understand why a rebate program also wouldn't be costly to administer.
The idea that we had in mind is that we would have a simple way to track. If somebody had a receipt, they could submit it, we could issue a rebate, as opposed to giving a credit and following through, did they install a rain garden? Are they maintaining that rain garden? Are they? It was just a simplified way of, I did something for my residential property, here's the receipt, here's a rebate. We just thought that was the most effective way financially to, just to, to track this, and to still provide a credit to the residents.
Now, would your committee serve as the conduit for processing the requests for rebates, and ultimately, the money would come from the township?
Yes, I'd like to be involved with that, absolutely. I think our committee, you know, would want to be involved. We put that forth.
So you do all the legwork, and then present it to the township finance director or somebody for payment?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a combination, that we could collect receipts and put forth a list and work with the township to provide that rebate list.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
Little interruption.
I know it's late, so I'll try and keep you on the edge of your seat. So moving forward to the commercial, the non, the single-family residents, we're doing a recommendation of a credit approach. This is common practice throughout the United States. We have a list, again, that was included for various towns and municipalities that we researched, and I have to give Paul a lot of credit. He really did a lot of research, put together various scenarios and things that we could review and discuss while we walk through this process. So we recommend a credit approach. For new development, the credit would not be given for merely complying with the ordinances, but an incentive to go beyond what is legally required through the application process. We, we would go through, if you turn to Attachment 3, various credits and eligibility's that the commercial districts could apply for. This would be above and beyond your ordinance requirements, and that we would review every project on a case-by-case basis to see if it goes beyond what's required, to produce stormwater benefits that make a difference in the community.
And this would be only projects that occurred or were constructed after this, this program was begun? So we're not reaching back for big projects that happened in the recent past?
Unless there was something that could prove otherwise, we felt was really beneficial that was, you know, a couple months before. I mean, ideally, we geared everything from January 1st on.
Okay, good, okay.
Just to move forward, when this committee was started in this fee.
I mean, I ask these questions because that's a question I get all the time.
Sure.
Is, you know, well, what about this I did five years ago? You know, I'm already addressing these issues, and it's a sticky issue.
Are there any questions that you have in regards to this at this point?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Sure.
So tell me, what, what's the purpose of the rebate? Is it, because if, assuming that for the rebate to make sense, the benefit of the rain garden or the rain barrel has to be more than the $50 that would go into a fund and then do something productive for stormwater. And I don't know that, do you understand that, that makes sense? Meaning that we're, we're losing $50, and my sense is that the accumulation of $50 from a whole bunch of residents is going to do more than an individual rain barrel. So in order for this to work, I have to be wrong on that, and somebody has to have made a determination that the individual rain barrel is better than the collective $50 from the people who buy them.
Well, typically, the rain valve, rain barrels cost somewhere between like $70 and $120. So really, if you were going to purchase a rain barrel, you know, you're still out, you know, the $70, let's say it's $120, that you're getting back a $50 credit, you're really doing it for the benefit of reducing, even if it's just slightly, one rain barrel for a quart of your roof for the property.
But my point is that, that I think you might be reducing less when you let people get the $50, pay the $50 for the rain barrel, because the, the rain barrel is going to have a very marginal impact. And maybe the $50 has a marginal impact, but my sense is that the $50 collectively is going to have a greater impact than all, all of the individual rain barrels. And, you know, I'm happy to be wrong. A, a rain barrel is kind of insignificant, I'll sign up on the first day and buy one and put it in, but, but I'm, I'm not sure that it contributes to the end that everyone wants.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is engage the public, and just say that there are things that you can do, and that not everyone would just go out and purchase a rain barrel on their own. But having that incentive would just allow the public just to realize that there are things that you can do that aren't that expensive, and that this was one step forward to provide a one-time credit for the, for the residential properties.
So fair enough, then, to say that the, the educational benefit, if there's a marginal loss in effectiveness, you're willing to accept that because the education benefit offsets the marginal loss in effectiveness?
Correct. This was more for educational benefit, to engage the public.
And then I, I do like the idea of simplifying the credit system the way you explained, and I think some scholars call that constrained choice. When people have too many choices, it's a disaster, so you picked seven, eight manageable number of choices, and it becomes, you turn an essay question, an essay exam into a multiple choice exam, so I think that's prudent on your part. For the other developed properties?
Yes.
How is it that you intend to quantify going beyond? I think that's going to be hugely complex, and then that's going to be relatively easy compared to correlating going beyond to how much that credit should be.
And I think that's something we're going to need to look at on a case-by-case basis, to see really, what is the flood mitigation? What is the volume credit? Like, what really is this project putting forth that's going to make an impact for stormwater management? And, and like, we broke down the list for volume credits, eligibility, and we would have an application project that we review each project.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just speak?
Sure.
So if you look at those various other places in the United States that do this, they have very specific formulas about how they calculate them, they're just, they're one equation that just cranks through to come up with a number that some, you know, some percentage of the 50% say.
So that would be, I think that's prudent, like, similar to that idea of constrained choice, this is a hugely complex thing, and I think we have to sacrifice efficiency for simplicity, so turn it into.
Nobody, well, there's a couple places.
Turn it into seven or eight realistic scenarios and take our chances with that. Okay, and then last for me is, I do get a lot of feedback about, or from people who invested tens of thousands of dollars in their properties, and my sense is that this is going to have greater political viability if that window is taken back deeper, or maybe, maybe it just might be the people in the land development process who built a patio and spent 15 grand for stormwater, and they come to me and they say, you know, I want $50 back. And so give some thought to taking that, that date that you set as January 1st, 2014, and determining whether that should be pushed back to include those people who spent a sizable amount of money on.
Just for the rebate, not for consideration of the credit?
I don't know, I'll pass that on to these guys to decide. Just include the, the interest of those that, recognize that some people spent tens of thousands of dollars, and they would want some of it.
If I may add, that is a single most.
I think you should keep, you know, January 1st, and going back.
Largest single call.
Somebody spent $15,000, we want to give them $50 back, what is that going to accomplish?
Well, and.
We're moving, we're moving forward this project, and we want to educate the public that hasn't done anything and get them to do something. If someone has done something, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Well, and those cases are almost inevitably, they're required to stormwater management because they redeveloped more than 500 square feet of their property, and anybody in this township that goes forward to do that has to do that. So they're not treated any differently than anybody who's, that, who does a project from today forward. Everyone has to do that stormwater management.
Agreed.
If you're, if you're just, if you're adding on more than 500 square feet, so.
Steve, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to add, that was, when we sent out the sample bills in the first billing, that was by far the largest volume of calls, was homeowners that had done work over previous years and spent considerable money on their systems, and that, like I say, just for edification of everybody, that was the largest single type of call we got. But in the SAC, pre-stormwater management advisory committee, this came up when we had our developers here, and it was voted in that group that that, exactly as Commissioner Schaefer said, that's something everybody has to do, stormwater fee or not.
Okay, so before we move on to your next, to the mapping, let's finish these two issues.
Sure.
And then do the mapping separately, so we don't get confused. Did you finish your presentation on the other developed property?
Yes, unless you had any questions.
I, I do.
Well, let's, let's see, does anybody want to take any action tonight on either of these? I mean, the home, the credit, excuse me, the incentive rebate looks pretty ready to roll.
Yes.
And I, I mean, if we could give you some guidance and approval tonight, that could roll out pretty quickly.
It's something that we could include with the next bill.
Yes, which I think would be perfect.
Great.
So I, if it's appropriate, we'd like to make a motion to go ahead and get a vote on whether, just on that particular aspect, the low-hanging fruit.
That would essentially be that.
Right.
Correct.
The substance of that.
Correct.
With the date added.
With the date, yes.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so we could just do a consensus.
We're not passing ordinance.
It'll definitely, but it's, but I would love to, like to give them some guidance that they have a consensus of that we support that, and let's move with that, we're ready to go with that.
That'd be appreciated.
Okay.
I'm, support it, and I'm ready to go with that.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to take a formal vote, but when that comes back to us for formal approval, it looks good.
Great.
The next one, we're not quite there, I don't think.
Okay.
It says in your materials that, you know, some of these details need to be hammered out, and it seems, it seems like you feel that that will happen when we get a support service contract.
Correct.
Which makes total sense. In terms of logistics and when that's happening, we don't really know. Perhaps Mr. Norsini can.
I'm hoping we have something, so we had the, the proposals and the request for qualifications. Now we're in the proposal stage, the actual cost proposal stage, and I hope to have those choices to this board in November.
Okay. And of course, this type of work is in that RFP, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And you, it'll be at that time, your decision to determine how much or how little of these services you wish to use.
So, and this, this is an engineer to be an advisor to this group? Is that correct?
It's actually several things. Not necessarily an engineer in all parts, because some of it was for GIS, so it's a geospatial analyst or someone along those lines. Another person was, or another facet of this is to assist finance.
So it's an entity, not a person?
Correct.
And has a budget been defined for it?
No, that's, the proposals will let us know what the market is telling us this costs.
I mean, my sense of where this should go is that the, my, well, I just have, I have trouble, I'd be worried that we could turn this into a, into a, a very, very expensive position, and I think what you need is a, a four-year, a four-year person with a background in planning, maybe not even an engineer, somebody who, so, I mean, I have some other things that I'll share, but for now, I just, I don't see myself supporting, you know, this as a 20-year person with, you know, a breadth of experience. This is a, somebody to interface with Steve, essentially.
And that was one of the things, so when you get the, the proposals, this board has the option to say, you know, we don't wish to go in that fashion. We wish to have a part-time person do X, another person do Y, we don't need this entity or entities, but those prices will, will help you make that decision.
Okay.
All right, well, we will cross that bridge when we get to it, but back to this conversation, the sort of putting down in writing all the details of this program is something that you'll look to help, professional help for.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay, well, can we again have a consensus, like what we see right now is in general, along the long, along what we were envisioning?
No, I think it's much too vague for that right now. So my, and my sense is if this didn't happen next year, because you had to get your technical help on board, and this started the following year, that would be perfectly appropriate. So at, at this point, I think it's, it's, I mean, it's, other than, other than continue with what you're doing and bring us back the details, that's the full extent of.
Okay, then I will give you my personal feedback, that I was very pleased to see this, you know, the, the beginnings of the detail here, this comported exactly with what I had been envisioning.
Okay, good.
And I so appreciate the effort that went into looking at all of the other cities and how, I know that was probably a lot of work, and, you know, why reinvent the wheel?
Right.
So, and it's reflected here, that there was some real thought put into this, so thank you, and I think we'll all look forward to seeing this as it evolves. All right, now let's move on.
Hold on, I have a question. How, how does it work as far as the maintenance? Credit will be given for up to 10% of the annual stormwater fee for, in which an eligible applicant can demonstrate they have properly maintained their existing?
Are you looking at Attachment 3?
I'm looking at this, Attachment 3, yeah.
Okay.
Existing stormwater, existing structure credits. So, when is that structure, is that structure, older, older structures, is that what that means?
No, that would be, for instance, if you put in a rain garden. And there's certain maintenance that is associated with maintaining the rain garden, the vegetation, whether it perks or not in that rain garden, so that you just want to make sure that every year that these are maintained, because if they're not maintained, it defeats the purpose of installing them in the first place.
So, this maintenance would not apply to existing structures, you're saying? Once again, it's everything after your January 1st, January 1st, 2014 date?
Correct.
That's your thought on that?
Correct.
And this volume credit, how would this affect people who are under planning right now? For example, is Villanova, would they, by exceeding their stormwater requirement, would they be able to totally obviate their stormwater fee?
They would have to demonstrate, and this, again, this is something we'd have to review for each project, to see that they're not just going, you know, 1% over that. They're doing something substantial above and beyond what's required. And I think each project, we would have to take a hard look to see if it is possible to give them a credit. It's not set in stone, something that we'll have to look on a case-by-case basis.
And that would be by the stormwater committee that would look at these multimillion-dollar projects?
We would make a recommendation to the board and recommend, if we felt a credit is warranted, we would, we would go to the board.
And the, this person that would be the consultant would provide some kind of objective criteria, or you're still saying case-by-case based on the best judgment of the, of the stormwater committee, which would be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners? But presumably, the Board of Commissioners would not be in a very good position to second-guess, would they?
Well, correct. I think having this stormwater administrative person firm, whatever is chosen, would definitely have, from the three requests for qualifications we've reviewed, have experience in doing stormwater credits for residential and commercial properties. So, I think that they would definitely be beneficial in helping us shape and craft what type of credit that we are going to give to a project. And that, again, we would put forth a recommendation to the board if we felt it was worthy of a credit.
But you think, you would admit that, in your view, it could be possible that a large developer, for example, Villanova Biomed, could end up totally getting a credit for their entire fee based on the parameters that you're setting out here?
It's possible, but I'm not, you know, it depends, again, it's, if you read here, it says, for the first year, it's 100%. Could be up to 100%. After that, it would be 50% for the second year and up to 10% for the third year.
And wouldn't we view that as a good thing? I mean, isn't that the intent of this? To, the intent is to
Wouldn't, I would view that as a, as a real chance for abuse.
Commissioner Booker.
And this, this would be a delegation, you know, I think it's kind of, I worry about the improper delegation of authority.
In, in the large land development product, projects, Danah Fleming, our appointed township engineer, they're doing, they're reviewing the stormwater management process that the applicant comes in with. So, we have our appointed engineer who can review that, and the applicant can have to prove to them that this indeed does exceed by a certain amount. And then our, our engineering firm can provide that to the stormwater committee, to the administrator, whoever. So, we always have that on our side. It's, it's not a nebulous item. They should be able to quantify what that would be.
But nobody currently would be able to avail themselves of that, right? So, it's only for people going forward, right? And no one else could prove, even if they exceeded it in the past. So, I, I think that that also would be arbitrary, and, and I, I'm concerned about the arbitrariness of this and the, and the arbitrary date that we're setting.
Well, I, I just want to say one thing, too. It's tough, because you're not going to compare apples to apples. If you're going back to look at a project 10 years ago, where the ordinance might have required more lenient stormwater requirements as opposed to now. So, I'd like to, when we view a project, review it with the ordinances that are implemented currently, so that we can see, is it above and beyond, and is it going to serve such a wonderful purpose to reduce stormwater for that community, that watershed, that it's worth doing a credit program? As opposed to looking back 10 years ago, trying to compare it with the ordinances of today, I still think January 1st, when this was started, would be the more beneficial and appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. And let's move on to the mapping. And your recommendation on that front?
We submitted a memorandum to the board, April 2014, recommending unanimously voting against, 7 to 0, to contract digitization mapping for single-family residents. We subsequently sent a memorandum to the board on May 19th that said, "We recommend that the proposals received for digitization of the single-family residence and development of a more complex fee structure should not be acted on at Radnor at this time. The six-figure cost in implementing this can be better spent for critical stormwater projects." We received at our September meeting, there were two proposals for digitization. One proposal was approximately $96,000. The other proposal, I think, was $141,000. Again, we felt that the cost would be high and the benefit would be low to Radnor. So, the stormwater committee voted again unanimously that at this time, we are against spending stormwater impact fees for digitization of single-family properties. We believe that instituting a more complex single-family fee structure would add significant administrative cost to the township.
What about commercial projects? Commercial properties, what about commercial property?
They're already digitized.
No, they're not digitized.
I mean, they're, they're, yeah, they have the exact
They're not digitized. I mean, they might be digitized, but they're not digitized.
We have the exact coverage of each of the commercial products.
AMIC used
The ODPs.
Yeah, the ODPs, AMIC did digitize those properties for, within the parameters for square foot area for billing. It was the single-family properties that went into the statistically significant categories, four different categories, which were based on lot size.
Okay, so, I'll start out by saying, I completely appreciate this recommendation. And in a normal world, you are right, okay? You're right. It is a lot of money for little benefit. And practically speaking, what you get for that money isn't going to be that different than what we get from the digitized. It's really not, because most people build out to their impervious or close to it. But we don't live in a normal world. We live in a world, a political world. And the sanctity of a fee like this, in my view, the longevity depends on people really having faith that it's totally fair. And in my ward, I have bigger properties, smaller impervious coverage. And, you know, comparatively. And the complaint I get again and again and again is, "Why would you lump me in with all these other properties? I have so much, so little impervious, so little impervious coverage on my property compared to all my pervious. I shouldn't be paying the same as somebody who has an acre that's, you know, all impervious."
So, we're, we would spend $120,000 to save them five, $10?
They feel they are unjustly being, the, the fee is unjust because it's not, it doesn't comport with exactly what's on their property. They're being lumped together because of their acreage. And I'm, I'm not defending this position, but this is what I hear again and again and again. And I try to explain that it's not going to change that much, because it's still the impervious coverage that you can put on an acre. And that's, you know, that, that's how it's, that's the correlation that was used. But I, I've just, I, I've come to the conclusion that unless people see that they are being assessed on exactly the property they have, they're not going to feel that they're being fairly assessed.
The only thing I say to that, too, and just being in the engineering field, is that you're comparing what you're calling impervious surface. So, there's a C, the coefficient, you know, that is associated with that, from pervious for grass. But there's areas where it's gray, where you have the so-called grass area, but it's heavily compacted. Is that really impervious? What are the soils under there? Do you have better percolation on one property than the other? I mean, it just goes down a road of how fine-tuning are we going to look at every single, single-family property? The percolates can vary, the soils can vary.
Right. I think we would do it the same way we do the ODPs, which is, anything that's impervious in our statutes, so gravel, asphalt, that's what you would count. And that's what we did with ODP. And listen, I, you know, I'm not going to die on this hill. I, I have no idea.
I think you are dying.
No, I'm not. I'm just, this is my position, and I, I want to recognize that I think you're right. But I
You've told these people, and they, I sympathize with them and you, you've told them that it, it's not going to make much difference financially. How much would it mean? It's a practical matter.
It's going to mean zero, it's a practical matter, because some people will be winners and some people will be losers.
So, we're going to be doing all this work
Some people will do what, some people will do what Elaine wanted, and they will pay more.
And we still have to keep the same amount of money coming in.
Because it's a correlation, so there are equal number of winners and losers.
Right.
We still need to keep the same amount of money coming in.
Yep.
So, it's going to be a conversion from lot size to square footage.
Right.
But we have to make up that same amount of, of income.
And it doesn't make sense practically, it only makes sense politically.
Right.
In that, and to me, the longevity, if you want people to really buy into this forever and every year when they have to write that check, they have to believe that it's fair. And I, I just, from the feedback I've gotten right now, many people don't think it's fair.
I've had the same exact thing in, in my ward, because there's a lot of large lots. So, and we agree that we thought we had a reasonable surrogate when we passed this, right? So, maybe a different approach would be, help us with an education strategy, so we can convince people that they are being treated fairly.
I think they are being treated fairly, because, well, just my answer would be if someone called and said, you know, "I really feel like my neighbor has more pervious than I do." This is going into a fund that's going to affect everyone. It's going to fix roads that are throughout the town.
You're preaching to the choir.
Right, that are throughout the township, not just in certain districts or areas, so
I mean, for example, I have one guy who has five acres. He's even got a pond on his property, where most of the runoff goes to the pond. And I said, "Yeah, but you've got five acres. We're only charging you for the greater than one. So, the other three-plus acres are free." So, I kind of, he kind of backed off with that. But these are the kind of issues you have, that we deal with. So, anything you could do to help us with a strategy to show people that the system is reasonable.
So, I have a, I mean, I'll tell you my suggestion for it. So, first, I very much applaud the decision not to spend $100,000 for this. It's the difference between a survey and a census. And sometimes, a census is inferior to a survey, and this, in my opinion, is one of those times. So, also, just, I don't think anybody's being lumped together. The, there's a correlation, and the people with big properties are, are, they're just, it's a formula, and they're just being assigned based upon that formula. It's not, it's not, and the fact that they're a big property, the correlation reflects that. So, I, I don't, I don't agree with the, they're, they're getting lumped into the smaller properties. It's a correlation. And then you're, you're never going to make it that exactness, no matter what you do. There's too many other factors. So, you have to simplify it, you have to constrain choices. In my opinion, it's appropriate to proceed the way you're doing. The one change that I recommend is we have, we have four categories. It's a correlation, so we could just as easily have eight categories. And then it would be smoother, meaning that the people who are, people would be closer to the, you know, the, the center line of the projection, as opposed to, right now, you could be over by a foot and be lumped into the next category and pay $75 more per year. So, if you had eight iterations instead of four, you would have a smoother correlation, and that might mitigate some of the concerns.
And one of the other concerns we had, too, was with this impervious and digitization is, suppose someone adds a deck, or they take down a pool, or they add a patio, then we're having to track that. It's great if we did this, you know, survey, and that's just what it will be till the end of time, but it's not. There's going to be always changing, and we would have to track that along the way. So, that was one of the other reasons why we were not for spending that money. But that is something I can go back to the committee and see, and talk to them.
Well, I think you're right, and I, I agree with Elaine and John on this, so I hate to hesitate to say that. The point is, is that we, we have implemented this fee. And it's really not a fee, it's a tax. The, the analog for you would be saying, how, assessing somebody's house based on how many bedrooms they have. We don't do that. We take a look at what property they have, what the comparables are, what the amenities are, what the ages. You can't, you can't, the, so, I, I disagree that the analogy is, "Well, the heck with it, just go ahead and unfairly assess everybody." It's not that unfair. I think that's a very poor way to treat this. And I, I, I think that nobody wants to spend $100,000 to do this, but, you know, I would not have voted to do this stormwater fee anyway. I think it's a tax. So, if we, we got into this, and we ought to, we ought to do it, and we ought to administer it fairly. And, and that means administratively keeping track of it. That means doing an assessment that's accurate, and it's part of the function of government. We do it all the time, and it's unfortunate that we have to spend that, but it's unfortunate the situation in the first place.
Okay, my, my sense is we need to decide tonight. We've had plenty of discussion about this. We've had a committee give us an opinion. So, I'll make a motion that we accept their recommendation.
Second.
Was there any other discussion about it? Any staff comment?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
Me just a comment, and I know, Rich, I've, I've heard your comments about you're not in favor of the stormwater fee. What plan would you, how would you see us funding all these improvements that the township's done studies for 20 years and starting to resolve these issues? How else would we fund these things?
We, it's, it's a, it's a capital project, like all other capital projects, and
But how would we fund that?
If we say we can't do it, then, you know, I, I personally think that we can reduce our personnel expenditures. I think we could cut our personnel and staffing by 10%.
Okay.
And not, and not, and that would be a start. That would be the start.
What we will do, then, is part of the presentation, we will show a budget, what it looks like with 10% cut in staff, and what that means with the cut in services. And that would be, that would be fine, but from everything I've heard, you know, this board has had to catch the bag of all the things of contracts that have been given away without any forethought or that.
Okay, Bob, I think we digress a little here.
Well, I just look at, the issue is, it's easy to say we don't want to fund things, but to me, as day-to-day, I've got to deal with how we're going to go ahead and manage staff, funding and money.
The good thing is, the majority of board gives you direction, not one person.
But here's the thing.
Not one person.
But you've got to understand, though, I've got to manage staff where you have, you do have to deal with 10% cut in staff, when they've already been reduced, and all these other things that come out in these meetings, is be able to manage that, but then also to be able to deliver a high level of service that's demanded from the community. Because there isn't one person that stood here and said, "Please cut my services. You know, I think we have too many services. I haven't heard anybody say we have too much staff." So, I mean, those are the kind of things where, you know, how do you fund these things? Because what has happened is, no one has had the courage to stand up, like this board, to start addressing long-term issues to the township. This township was going into the ground. So, there was going to be an issue. And I've told people before, and I've said this previously, the township lived a lie. You have not, you've borrowed so much money to be able to fund things, that we're paying debt on cars, police cars, that we don't even own anymore. At some point, you've got to balance that.
We passed the stormwater phase, so we're funding it.
Yeah, and on that, on that happy note, I'd like to see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this motion from Commissioner Curley? And if not, I'll call the vote.
Wait, how can we have a motion on this? It wasn't before the board.
It's a sense of the board.
It's a consensus.
Yes, sense.
Okay. It was moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So, it passes a vote, well, on a vote of four to two. So, we, that's an acceptance of your recommendation.
To help, to help your political problem here, and we, we do send our bills out annually. Maybe we should have a couple of commissioners put heads together and write up, I know we do questions and answers, but write up some rebuttals and try to explain to people how it's not a 100% fair system, but it's a system that will let government work and will, it's a system that will effectuate progress in curing our flooding problems.
Right, I think that's a good idea, because we did, in our materials, when we, when we passed this, we did discuss taking this action of, you know, digitizing everything. And so, we are, in a sense, kind of going back on what we promised. So, I do think it deserves some explanation when we send out our bills. I don't know that, you know, how will, how that happens. Maybe you'll have some thoughts on that. But sort of defending the sanctity of this situat, like, why we set it up like this and how it, it does correlate. how it, it does correlate. I mean, it's, you don't have to get wonky about it and do the statistical analysis, but it, it does correlate.
And in addition to that, not only to so-called defend that, but we also are going to put forth in the billing the positive things that we've already recommended.
Right, right.
Just to bring everyone up to speed, to know, this is what we've done, we've just started our committee this year, these are the recommendations we've put forward, and the project planning that we're looking at for the next year and beyond.
So that's a great segue to your last item, which is an update on the priority list.
Correct. We have established a priority list. Let me see if it was included in here. I don't know if it was included in this packet.
No, that was, that was not included.
Okay.
That was still fluid as of our meeting.
We have established a priority list. We are in the process of reviewing multiple projects. We have sewer replacement projects, stormwater projects, but also projects to mitigate flooding and stormwater. The areas of consideration that we're looking at are critical safety issues, project costs, maintenance costs, feasibility of implementation of these projects, how many people will it affect, what watersheds will it affect. Right now, although we have a list that we'd be more than happy to provide you in the, maybe November, December meeting, we still need to get some answers on some information, and we didn't want to, to rush this. So until we got some more information, we're working with Steve to get some of this information, look through some of the files in the township, so that we can make some reasonable decisions. But we can definitely provide you at an upcoming meeting, the list that, that we have.
Great, with the understanding that any list is fluid.
Is fluid, yes, correct.
So, and that's understood by all parties.
Okay.
Okay, great, that's good news, and we look forward to seeing that.
Excellent.
And let me say, thank you for all of your work. We know how hard you're working, we know that this is, these, all of these issues are controversial, and the whole underpinnings are controversial, so we appreciate your even approach to handling all these issues, and thank you for staying here so late tonight.
Sure, you got it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next, public safety, do you have anything, Bill?
I have none.
Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Nagel?
Why don't you fill, fill us in? Anything you want to tell us about? Oh, okay. No report.
Yes. Library, do you have any report?
Meeting on Thursday, no.
And Public Health?
No report.
Okay, old business? Any new business?
I have new business. I want to have on the next agenda this issue of the path from Radnor Elementary School Nature Preserve to the Harford location. That, that, that path has been lost, people do not recognize what the issues are, and we have a developer that blocked it off, really just to make a statement. So I, I want to, I want to bring that up and revisit that issue and see, revisit the history of it, and I want to, I want to talk about that issue, so that's one issue I want to have on there. Also, Bob, in response, we all have to manage with, with difficult things that we have to deal with. So I understand it's not easy, but I'm sure you'll be able to take care of it, just like all the rest of us. So also, the stormwater fee, I think, is arbitrary and capricious. I think that it's, I think that it's improper.
You called it a fee, though.
It's, it is a, it's, I use your, I use your terminology, it's, it's a tax, it's a, and...
I've never used that.
What we're doing here by taking this, making this arbitrary, it's even making it even more, it's even making it more arbitrary, so we have an abusive situation, we're making it even more abusive, and I, I think that it's, it's very much...
But what's your solution?
The solution is to use our money and prioritize our projects and do, do things properly, not to impose arbitrary fees. These fees are, you're going to be doing more and more, and we see it already, starting to, starting to add up, and it's, it's improper, and it's, it's not a good way for the township to go, and I couldn't be more opposed to it.
Rich, can I, can I respond to you real quickly?
No, I think we're timed, it's time to go, time to go, I think.
The rationale for doing this stormwater fee and not funding our stormwater control and flooding control projects through general revenues was that if we did the latter, we would not include organizations, entities that produce a large amount of our runoff problem in the township.
Are we going to talk about the, those entities that, what they said with, with respect to our request for a pilot agreement?
We're going to, you can talk about that.
Are we going to talk, it was in the newspaper, I'd like to talk about that.
Yeah, well, those, those entities, and they include hospitals, churches, synagogues, mosques, universities, colleges, junior colleges, et cetera. We're all going to benefit from the fact that they have to participate in solving this problem, and it's not just the average homeowner and the average commercial property owner that's going to be hit with this fee, it's all of those people I mentioned.
I understand, but my ward, my ward has the highest tax base in the township.
Rich, I've been waiting for you to say that, because you are wrong.
My, my ward will pay the highest, highest amount of stormwater fee.
Your resident's total tax base is about four.
And my ward is outside of the, of the, of the problem areas.
No, they're not.
So my, my ward is going to be paying for this and not receiving the benefit of it. There's no, no projects in our ward, so this is improper use.
Okay, gentlemen, I think we can finish this discussion at another time. Is there any other new business? I'd like to mention one thing. I would like to gently remind and implore my colleagues that we seek to, that we seek to achieve a certain level of decorum, civility, and respect on this board. If there are personal differences between commissioners, I, we would all appreciate if those are kept off-board, and that we don't waste the public's time with them. So, is there any public comment?
Move adjourned.
All in favor? We are adjourned.